Because we're going to call the meeting order.
Here.
Trustee Brewer.
Here.
Trustee Grant.
Here.
Trustee, does that say here?
Here.
Trustee Todd.
Here.
Trustee Lee.
Here.
Okay, um, there's a motion here to go into the executive session.
Mr. Mayor, please press the end of the meeting.
I'm just asking, is there a need for it?
Yes, can we move to the end of the, um...
What's the topic?
Uh, first day out, ma'am.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, alright, the first presentation we're going to have to would be Centrica. Would be, uh, what is it, Centrica?
Centrica.
Centrica, yes.
Okay, um... Uh, Mr. Carroll.
Yes, ma'am.
And, uh, please, um, Trustee Brewer, uh, is going to, you're heading, so...
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you know, uh, there has been an ongoing issue with infrastructure repair and replacements. This meeting is simple. We just want some information about, uh...
Could we use my mic, please?
Uh, sorry, I'm going to go to... As you know, there has been an ongoing issue with infrastructure repair and replacements for the village for years, throughout the village for years. Now, this meeting is going to focus on water meter repair and replacement. It's simple, so, well, Mr. Carroll, will you please let us know about your company?
Yes, ma'am, good evening, thank you, Trustee Brewer. Good evening, trustees, good evening, mayor and clerk. Uh, my name is Jeff Carroll with Centrica Business Solutions, and also, we have our, uh, Director of Development for the Midwest Region, Mr. Ori Cummings. We're going to be brief, take up only a few minutes of your time tonight, and let you get to the rest of your business. Um, as an introduction, uh, you probably have not heard of the company Centrica. Uh, we're one of the leading international energy service solution providers, um, in the world, and the country overall, the company overall, is 200 years old. Uh, so I'm going to go to the next page. Everyone should have a copy of the presentation, so you should be able to follow pretty nicely. So, in, in summary, uh, in the energy world, um, we're a company with $30.8 billion in revenue, 26 million customer accounts, 13.7 terawatts in renewable power, which we have under our management as a corporation, and 2.5 gigawatts that we manage in route-to-market capacity, and basically, that means that we take our customers' generated capacity, and we help them optimize it into the power, the energy market. And then over to the right of that page, you'll see some of the companies that are affiliated with Centrica. Uh, you see Direct Energy, which you may have heard of before. You'll see British Gas, which is the largest gas utility in England. Uh, Cent- Centrica Energy Trading, and then a new, relatively new company to the family is Board Gas Energy. If you move to the next slide, it, it shows you our locations around the world. Thank you. Um, we primarily work with commercial, industrial, and the public sector that have critical needs for energy. Um, and then you can see the number of clients over in the left margin, in the Americas, the UK, and internationally, meaning outside those countries. So, at the end of the day, what do we do? And I, I bolded a few of the things that we do that may pertain to opportunities to help the village of Salt Village in reducing costs related to energy and water infrastructure. So, just to cover the highlighted items, LED lighting and controls, um, I'm not sure how many buildings that the village has, but when we walked in, we sat and we looked. Beautiful lighting in the room, uh, T5 fluorescent lamps. Top of the, I mean, the, the top of what you could do with lighting when this facility was built, and now we're down, we're down to LEDs, which use a fraction of the energy of TVs. Um, we do street lighting and smart street lighting technology. Uh, so, the village has streetlights that are still high-pressure sodium, which is that yellowish light. Uh, we do retrofits to reduce the energy and also operational costs. The LED streetlight needs to be replaced a fraction of the time that a high-pressure sodium does, and uses approximately 60% less energy, ballpark, 60% less energy. Uh, you multiply that by the streetlights throughout the village, and that turns out to be a nice little nickel, and, um, you'll see why we're focusing on the cost and savings, because at the end of the day, we try to use that to fund the projects that we bring to our customers. Then the next bullet is water conservation and metering, and that's primarily what, uh, brought the village of Salt Village to our attention. Uh, we've done this type of work throughout the country, where we help our customers by basically replacing their water meter infrastructure. And with the more accurate water meter, you're going to get a more accurate reading, which means that the village has, one, the ability to capture revenue that literally right now, um, is going through the pipe and down the drain, but also, uh, you have the increased lifetime of a brand-new meter. Then, the last item, the, the last three items, cogeneration, and that may apply, that's basically where you generate your own electricity, using natural gas or some other source, and you also recover some of the heat, which is why they call it cogeneration. Uh, that's something that some villages have an opportunity to take advantage of, some don't, and at the end, you'll see that we want to take the time to find out how we can help the village, and we do all of that initially on our own dime, so to speak. Solar, we have a very robust solar business within Centrica. Everyone is doing solar right now, or considering solar, and our company has installed and is managing, um, a good deal of solar within the US and outside the US. And then the last one is building envelope, and at the end of the day, what that means is the parts of the building that literally, um, envelop the building, the roof, the windows, um, anything that's part of the building envelope, which does impact energy consumption by the building. And if you go to, thank you, that's alright, if you go to the next page, um, it looks like a nice map, but that is how we do what we do. And you've noticed the first box at the upper left, it says, "We listen and learn," and we've done that so far, um, in meetings up to this point, and we hope to do it after tonight's presentation to you. The only way we can help is to listen to what your challenges are, what your needs are, and then to come back with some type of solution that meets those, and also your financial situation as a municipality, because it doesn't work if you're not able to afford it, or to get it, or to make it happen, and that's the whole reason that we're here. We next do a preliminary assessment after our initial listening. That preliminary assessment is what we do on our dime, and at the end of the day, that lets us know, and it lets you know, as a village, is it worth our time to continue spending time and energy looking at a solution? So, we get a high-level, um, ballpark of cost and savings, a return on investment, and then we sit down and decide, is this something that the village wants to do? Um, I won't go, go through every single box on here, um, but, third down from the left, you'll see funding the project. That is part of our process. We look at the financial situation of the village, we look at the cost to implement the solution, and then we look at the return on investment for that solution. So, if we're talking meters and, let's say, streetlights within the village, there's a cost to do all that work. We do the engineering, the design, the project management. This is what's called a one-neck-to-choke, or turnkey approach that we have to our projects. So, all the costs get run into the cost of the project, and then we calculate the savings. It's not just energy savings, it is also operational savings. So, the cost that you have as a village to run a truck out to change the streetlight because it's out, um, or the cost that you have to go and repair a meter because it's 20 years old and it needs to be repaired. All of those are operational costs that are affiliated or associated with the project, we calculate that, and we do this in an open discussion with you. We don't do it in a closed room. We do this in an open discussion, so you understand how we're doing this, and then you can see what cash flow is every year for the project, and then we look to fund it. Okay, we're going to skip this next slide and go to funding solutions, and you've, you've got it in your, in your hands, so you can look at it at a later time. Um, primarily, we use local government legislation to govern this project, and if you look all the way down, um, the second from last, primary bullet, you'll see ILCS 50, ILCS 515, Local Government Energy Conservation Act. That is the state legislation that governs this type of work. So, we don't create something on our own, and then you have to worry about, is the village exposed to something because we've done something that is untraditional or untried? This type of work is done by the federal government all the time, um, and when they compare doing work under this type of legislation, ver- this is the federal government, versus doing the work on their own, let's say, going out, getting a bid on meters, getting a bid on lighting, managing the process, picking the low bidder, which is something that we may or may not do, because sometimes the low bidder does not have the best product for the solution. We find that the energy savings is, help me out, Lori. The percentage increase in energy savings?
Oh, yeah, it's typically 40% more, so the federal government, like Jeff mentioned, um, and we use the federal government, because they've invested a lot of money and time into how they go about doing these projects, and their projects end up being 50, 100, 250 million dollar projects, so they have to justify how they're going about it. So, the guaranteed energy savings approach is key to being able to do that, and that's really what, what we want to talk about with you guys, is putting together a program that meets this legislation and seeing if it's a good fit, and that's really the first step to this, um, and we haven't gone through that process yet, so we don't quite know if it is a good fit, um, but we want to help you guys decide the right path to take forward, um, and, and we think this could be a good path, but if not, then, um, you know, there's other ways that you guys can go off and do that, um, and I know, you know, you have people on your staff here that are familiar with going through and getting loans for these projects, and, um, so there could be other good ways to do that, too, so we just want to help in any way that we can and, um, and go through that process. I think the remaining slides are kind of just building off of what we've already talked about here. Um, the last one I did want to mention is, is a case study of a project that we've done, um, you know, it's about an hour south of here in Owatseka. Um, it's a more recent project, so I think it's a good one, it's a case study, but we have several other projects that we could, um, offer up to you guys as case studies and give you contacts, um, but the big piece of this one that I wanted to mention is there was a, about a $200,000 grant that we assisted, uh, the county obtaining, um, and then we were able to implement a project with them, uh, with no upfront cost, no upfront capital, um, in what we call a completely budget-neutral project, meaning whatever they were going to spend on their utility bills anyways, uh, we captured that savings and used that savings to pay for the project. So, it, it remained completely budget-neutral, so we're able to implement these projects with a lot of municipalities and local government entities that literally have no room in their budget to do a project like this, and we can make that work with guaranteed savings and, um, with our funding expertise, and I, I think that's really what we wanted to run through today, so I appreciate it.
So, um, now, we'll take any questions that you have, and, but before you ask them, I would just say, our hope is that you have an interest and that you want to have discussion and move to the next step of saying, is there a project here that can, that is rep- uh, budget-neutral or not? And, again, that's on our dime, and there's kind of nothing more like getting information that's valuable to you, and there's no risk in it. So, now, any questions that you have, we'd be happy to take them.
Yeah, I have, yeah, I have a, a couple of questions. Um, in concerns with the water meter funding, which is near and dear to our heart, because our water meters, uh, getting to that point, are you saying that we could get help from the government to help fund the replacement of those water meters? And if that's the case, I'm looking at 200,000 if you got for the, um, chiller plant in, um, in Iroquois County, um, but the, the overall amount coming out of the, um, I guess it's coming out of their, their coffers, 800,000. So, basically, we're talking like a 10, 10% or 20%, basically, 20%, um, invest, not investment, uh, in reimbursement from the government, that would, is that usually what the, um, reimbursement would be? The grant would go at 20% of, they had grants that give us at least 60%. Um, that's what I'm, that's what I'm, basically, my question is.
Yeah, and it's really, it's project by project, so that's a process we'll go through and see if there's any available. If there's, a lot of the projects that we implement have no grants and no funding available, and that's why they need to go a route like this, uh, where there's no upfront capital, and they literally use the savings that's guaranteed by our company to make the payments over time. So, we will hold that, I know some of your, some of Trustee Brewer and some others are already looking into those, and we can help with that process as well. So, we could, and really, we're going to look at as many options as we can and put all those options in front of you guys, so you guys can decide what the best path forward is.
So, basically, if we don't, then the next step would be either buy or a loan?
Um, well, there's different types of mechanisms, um, this project uses a tax-exempt lease-purchase agreement, so it, it's a lease-type program with low interest, um, it doesn't go on as debt to the, to the local government entity that does it, so it's a different way to approach it, but we have experience with pretty much any type of funding mechanism, including capital.
I mean, that's, that's the point that I was looking at, to see, um, you know, if you get a buy, you have to have a way to pay it back.
Correct.
Same thing with a loan, so you have to pay it back.
Right.
And, uh, but in the meantime, I thought, you know, I'm just looking at what you're, um, I guess, you know, you're, what you usually get, or what can you usually get, but as you just stated, there is not necessarily 20%, it could be more, it could be less, it could be nothing, but you're putting, you're basically, what you're doing, you're putting a package together for us, and that's what you're doing.
Yes, and, and then the guarantee is, is what makes the project work, so, I, I, when I say guarantee, uh, we're going to say that, say your payment, or your, you know, your commitment to whatever loan or funding you might get is $50,000 a year, we're going to guarantee that you're going to save more than 50,000 a year, and when I say guarantee, we're actually going to come back and measure, verify actual savings, and then reimburse you the difference if it's less than what we said it was going to be. So, it allows you to maintain that budget neutrality for every year of the term of the project, and that's what's required by legislation, so that's what makes these projects work. It's not usually year one, it's year five or year seven, where you're going to lose that savings over time, and we're going to be staying with you and partnering with you guys over time to make sure that savings stays in place, and that's what makes these projects work.
And that would be upfront, you let us know upfront?
Correct. Before you guys commit to any project, you'll know exactly what that is and be able to see what those are amortized out over, um, every year of the project.
Are there any questions? Trustee Brewer?
Uh, two questions. Uh, first question is, in the area, do you work with any of the municipalities in the area, in south suburbs or state of Illinois?
We have not, no. So, we, we've worked with several counties throughout the state and some, uh, K-12, as well as University of Chicago. Um, we're entering into a tenure contract at University of Illinois to do the same exact type of project, but we haven't quite got in with, uh, working with municipalities, and part of that is because, um, their lack of spending on utilities because of the franchise agreements, so they're not really a, a huge target for energy service companies like ourselves, uh, but there is opportunity, we want to see if we can help you guys out with that.
And you mentioned the, and the second step was the political assessment that you guys do, how long does that process usually?
Uh, that's usually about a four to six week process that we'll go through, um, and that's because we want to put some of that upfront engineering in for you guys to make sure that this is a good decision for you, and, and not just to kind of throw a swag number at, we want it to be realistic.
And then, there was a slide, sure, and then there was a slide for how the project funding works, and there's a term of, says typically five to 10 years. What determines the five to 10-year range, uh, you know, when you go do a project like this?
Yeah, so it's, it depends on the amount of savings that we're able to guarantee, so we'll always refer to that as the cash flow. The cash flow needs to be supported, or this needs to support the cash flow, meaning if we can get more savings annually, then that term is shorter, um, but if, the, the real goal and the real impact that these projects make is by bundling quick payback items with long payback items. So, you're not usually going to jump on an item that's going to take 30 years to pay back, but you'll jump on one that takes two years. By putting those together, you get that in then maybe that 10 to 15-year range, and then you can stomach it, it makes sense, it's going to pay for itself within its life expectancy, so that's usually what, um, it's really that cash flow balance. But we'll, what we do is we put all that together in a, um, what we call a toggling tool for you guys at the end of the audit process, and you can actually toggle on and off these individual items, and you'll see the cost and the savings, and see how those affect the overall financials of the project, so you can really decide and prioritize what makes the most sense for you, so it really allows you to customize the project, which is a nice process.
Any other questions? I, I do have one, you mentioned one thing. Um, you said you work with the University of Illinois, that UIC or U of A?
Uh, the, the whole network, so...
They, they have a cogeneration plant at UIC, at UIC.
Yes.
Yeah, I used to run that plant, exactly, but there, so I just wondered if you worked with them, uh, just asking, it's just...
Their plant actually, uh, the engineering, right, I'm going to turn it to a nerd, I apologize, but their plant, they actually sell some of their students to St. Ignatius High School, so that was a marquee project in the energy industry when they first did that.
Yeah, they sell electricity and they sell the heat there, too.
And, and even alma, alma IIT, they have a smart grid system and actually are able to sell electricity back to ComEd, and they also have an agreement with Bronzeville and the CHA as part of a team with ComEd.
But their plant...
But in closing, um, I just want to say that as, as we leave, that one of the things to consider is the cost of waiting, the cost of waiting, meaning it's like a faucet in your home, you turn it on and walk away, the meter's running, right? So, in this scenario, the cost of waiting means you, you got to pay that, you got to pay the cost to operate your water system, and every day or every week or every month that goes by without doing something, you're missing the opportunity to, to get that savings and get that revenue back into the village coffers, um, without having to do anything more than replace the meters and maybe do, upgrade your customer interface system or something like that, but waiting, there is a price to it, and I just want to leave that with you. Yes, I'm a salesman, but at the end of the day, it's always great to do something and then focus on something else, yes? You, you talked earlier about solar. Now, do you guys put panels on these buildings? If, if we went that route? That would be on your dime? Would that just be part of the project? That'd be part of the project. Right, because I know, like, Comcast's been doing that a lot? With all these solar companies. Yeah, we, if the village wants to make a statement, and let's say, just add solar to the project, right? So, it can be roof-mounted or ground-mounted, and we'll, we'll figure out what's the best way to do that, and we'll, just like Lori mentioned with the toggling tool, we'll see how that impacts the cash flow of the entire project, but sometimes if the village, it's a great thing to do, put a, put some solar panels out there, maybe have an interface that show, in the lobby that shows how much of the village's electricity is being generated by renewable energy, then you can have a carbon, uh, carbon impact calculator that shows how many trees it represents and how many cars you take off the road, and we can do all of that as part of the project, um, if the village decides that's something that they want to do.
Thank you. Are there any other questions and, for trustees? Okay, Mr. Carroll, I believe we'll be getting back to you hopefully, uh, very soon.
Thank you.
Probably with a, uh, a detail, you know, that you can give us the detail of what it would be, whichever project we're looking at, and how much, you know, what you can save us, and...
Sure.
Now, do you go out and do pricing, say, for meters, or is that done separate?
We will, no, we will, that will all be part of the initial work that we will do. We will have an i- an idea of what meters we want to use, we'll talk to you about that, and that will become part of our initial, um, facility or, or, um, infrastructure assessment report, and then as we get down into the details of it, then you'll see specific technology, and we'll talk about that and decide which ones that you want to see in the project.
Thank you so much, sir.
Okay, thank you, everyone, have a great evening, thank you.
Okay, next we have on the agenda, um, Mr. Satan from Abidah, um, you're going to come in, is this a new contract or is this an existing, or is this something that the survey that you're trying to present?
Uh, it's the existing contract, um, this was signed, um, by the village probably about two to two and a half years ago that I presented to the board. Um, whereas of our government solutions, we have a lot of your neighbors, we've been around since 1996, and have done the audit program for towns like Mattson, that just signed Harvey a year, um, a month and a half ago, um, Stager, um, Piattown, Glenwood, Linwood, um, Crestwood, we, we have a lot of municipalities, Mattson, um, and we look at the utility providers like ComEd and Nycor to make sure that they're remitting, excuse me, all the money per each household, making sure that every address is coded correctly. And the, the beauty of the program is it costs nothing, um, it's a three-year share of what we find, there's no upfront fees or backend fees, um, and I think that's why the board, um, originally signed the agreement two and a half years ago, we just had a hard time getting in to do our data intake to start the audits. Um, we found over $100 million in Illinois alone, um, we look at cable franchise fees, we look at ComEd, Nycor, Illinois Department of Avenue to make sure they have every address in their system as it should be, um, in Salt Village. Um, we don't know what we get until we look in, excuse me, into the, into the data, um, so, the savings could be large, they could be small, I mean, we have found $980,000 of gross operating revenue for Comcast in Springfield, Illinois, um, in Mattson, we found them $42,000 of AT&amp;T revenue on their receivables because there wasn't enough exemptions on the bill, so there's, those are just a few examples of what we've done, um, in, in Illinois for the past 15 or 20 years, um, and I know you have a copy of the agreement in front of you, so if anybody has any questions about the actual agreement that we signed.
Uh, do that one, I'm looking to find, how much did you find for Salt Village in the past year?
Um, we haven't been able, um, to do any of the audits, um, because we have to do the intake, um, there's a welcome call, and I've tried, um, for the last two and a half years to get that scheduled, um, thank you to, um, manager, Harkus Administrator, Harkus for bringing us back in to see if we can actually start the process. We did start to do the sales tax audit with IDOR and found that we're, um, we were able to do that audit in part, um, with our resources and found that there were some businesses that were not on IDOR's rolls, um, but like I said, it's all free money, it's all money that you wouldn't know is due to the village, there's no upfront fees or backend fees, all we want to do is share what we find.
Trustee Wade? Your mic's not on. Your mic's not on.
So, the agreement is over two years old, or dated agreement?
So, you, you agree with, so you agree with... Is the green button on? Green, green.
Um, so, um, the contract just states, um, that when we find what we find, we collect, um, the percentage, I'm, I'm, I'm not... I'm not sure what the percentage was, for a period of thirty-six months in each stream of revenue. So the contract as it is signed is still current, it's not, doesn't need to be re-signed or anything. We just need to do the intake, that's all we had to do. We did the welcome call and that's where it stopped. Because I know that there was administrative ins and outs and things like that, but we never had the chance to do the intake. And basically, it takes no more than four hours. Our OCR team comes in, we're scanning any GIS or water billing data, any pertinent ordinances that we can't find online. And we're pretty much off and running. And then we give you, whoever you'd like, the administrator and the manager and the mayor, we give ninety-day updates to them to let them know where we are in conjunction with each audit so that they're always aware of that. Oaklawn, we're manager, Harkus wise, we found them money as well. They were one of our clients as well, so...
So does the contract start three years from when we signed it originally or does this start from when you guys started?
It's basically, it, so the contract is stated, it's basically open-ended because the audits all start at the same time, they don't finish at the same time. So in each stream of revenue, whether it be gas, electric, Illinois Department of Revenue, when we get the findings and show you the findings of what we found, because we do a verification memo for the board to see, that's when the thirty-six months of payments would start in that stream of revenue. So it's just for payment terms.
And so as a board, we never decided exactly what we wanted you guys to look into, whether that was gas, electric, or...
It's all part of the agreement, it's all on there.
Everything?
Yes.
Trustee Wade?
Thank you. Who's your point person usually to start this contact? Who do you normally...
It's me that gets the OCR team.
At the municipality?
Oh, at the municipality. At the time, it was Mary and we tried to, we were talking with mayor, but there was, you know, and Mohan was here at the time and then he left.
I didn't mean who was, I mean what role, what position do you usually work with in order to get it started?
The finance director.
Finance director.
Finance director.
That's what I needed to know. Thank you.
And or the administrator in some of the municipalities.
Okay. Yeah.
We don't have the two?
Well, this one's not working. My question is, have we paid any upfront fees or anything? So we just, just a contract and we just waiting on us to start, right?
Correct. Correct. I'll talk for you though. It's a matter of starting the process and getting the documents so that the auditors can start their audit. Like I said, there's no upfront fees, there's no backend fees. It's if we find a hundred dollars, we'd like to split that for thirty-six months. And we go backwards, I should, I didn't state this, back for any retro money that you haven't gotten either. So we have attorneys on our staff that work on behalf of us and the city. Like that nine hundred eighty thousand dollars we found in Springfield, attorneys of ours negotiated out in conjunction with Springfield to get that money and that took seven years. We found that in twenty-eleven, they settled with Comcast in twenty-eighteen. And we're doing a lot of settlements with Comcast right now for about forty-eight different communities right now, so, as well as ComEd. So that, those are all coming to light.
Okay. Cause I'm looking here. It was forty-five percent, but communities, I guess, close to I-80, I believe forty percent.
Correct. It was forty percent. I'll give you the story. Mayor Williams helped us get this with Mayor Burgess and Glenwood with Ron Gardner. Linwood hasn't gone forward with them either. I don't know why. But we've just been waiting and I told Glenwood, since they signed it and went through with it and we found them some money as well, if you'd like to talk with Mayor Gardner, that I would honor the forty percent even though all three didn't go through with it or start the process.
So you need to have all four municipalities to...
No, I'm saying I'm honoring the sixty-forty split.
Okay.
Yes.
Any other questions? Okay, hopefully after this, we could work with you a little bit closer and...
I knew you'd find, you said you'd find me kept here, so I appreciate that, Mayor.
Okay. And then, yeah, and then we can, cause I'm always looking to bring money, even if it's sixty-forty split. Sixty-forty or something is a hundred percent better than nothing, so, yeah.
And sixty percent for three years and then a hundred percent after that, so... Thank you so very much for your time.
Thank you so much, sir. So thank you.
You're very welcome.
Mr. Zire, you're up.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Good to see you all. So first item that I'm going over is, I have a correction right off the bat. Where's Margaret? I don't know where she went. I gave her the wrong project title. So this is not the two-hundred-twenty-first culvert replacement project, this is the TIP resurfacing project. So we just opened bids for that at the last meeting. The bid results were really good. We had five contractors bidding, which is a lot. And we ended up with low pricing as a result of it. The low bid is about fifteen percent under our estimate, so we're happy with that. And deconstruction is the low bidder, their bid's in order and they're a good contractor to work with. So we are recommending that the village award the contract to deconstruction and we'll get going on that.
Okay, so that's the one, deconstruction?
Yes, deconstruction. Oh, I'm sorry. So the low bid by deconstruction was nine hundred seventy-one thousand, five hundred thirty-six dollars and fifty cents. And again, that is all paid for through TIP funds, through the bond refinancing, so basically no cost to the village.
Mr. Stockpoint Drive?
That is Stockpoint Drive and Mark Collins, both of the industrial parks.
Really, TIP two and three?
Yes. Any questions on that?
Anybody have any questions? Are they gonna do it this year or did you say...
This year.
Oh.
Yeah, that's why we wanna, go, go, go. Cause we wanna get it all repaid before the winter hits.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zire.
Okay, and then I got the next one too, I think.
The one that says for motor fuel tax?
Yes.
Yes.
So I could explain that one. So like we always do, we pass a series of ordinances and resolutions at the beginning of the MFT year. So we did that this past year. The difference in what I'm asking this time is we had an overrun on the expenses for the culvert replacement project. So we passed a resolution at the beginning of the year, it was for two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. That is short of what we actually need, which is two hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars to date. So maybe the construction comes in a little cheaper, could go a little bit over. So usually what we do with these resolutions is we try to overshoot the amount so that we don't have to come back and pass another resolution. So just to be clear, this is not superseding the previous ordinance that other ordinance or resolution was in effect. This is a supplemental resolution. So the first resolution was for two hundred eighty thousand dollars. We're asking the board to pass another resolution for fifty thousand dollars and that will be on top of it and that will bring it up to three hundred thirty thousand dollars, which will definitely cover the cost of the entire project. And again, this is coming out of MFT funds, so it's money the village essentially has at this point.
Anybody have any questions on that? Cause we'll see next week as the ordinance is rolled on. Anybody have any questions?
Mr. Zire, I understand that we wanna, we wanna ordinance to amend the, ordinance to amend the I.T. mancment to a fifty thousand dollars, right?
It's actually a supplemental?
A supplemental for a fifty thousand.
Yeah, so this resolution will not change? There'll be a new resolution for the supplemental resolution.
Oh, okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
And this is for three cent increase, correct?
This is for a fifty thousand dollar increase.
No, no, okay. Maybe I'm looking at the wrong thing. I'm looking at this ordinance nineteen dash oh twenty-two.
Okay.
Is that what you're talking, is that what you're talking about?
Uh-oh.
This is in MFT.
Uh-oh.
That's what I'm talking, that's what I'm talking about.
Oh my gosh!
Yeah, that's what I'm...
That has nothing to do with what we're talking about. I'll just go back to my seat, I was...
You're asking for an additional...
See, when you're not near Margaret, it goes off the rails.
You're asking for an additional increase instead of for an extra fifty thousand be added in too. That's what you're asking for.
Yes, apparently that would be on the next board meeting.
That'll be a separate order.
Yeah, in October.
Yeah, that'll be the second week in October.
Okay, just ignore everything I just said. We're putting pin in it and remember that a month from now about this.
Okay, so then this is something that we're gonna do right now, talk about right now and then do what you just did.
Yeah, I'm just gonna tuck my tail between my legs and go back and sit over there. Thank you.
Thank you. The next one is the ordinance nineteen dash oh twenty-two, the ordinance establishing a local increase motor fuel tax for gasoline. And we're looking to increase it a three cent per gallon of gas, a three cent increase.
Maybe, didn't we do this already?
No, what happened was I think the county increased it nineteen cent. And they doubled. It was nineteen, they went to thirty-eight cents.
I remember that, but I thought we already voted on this.
Oh, yeah, this, this, this one here we did, cause you can see this one was voted on. They're asking for, we're asking for, this is in two thousand nineteen, we're asking for three cent now.
An additional three.
Thank you. The issue is when it was presented to us before, the ordinance that we signed off on and presented to the Department of Revenue only had point zero three. And they took exception, so they needed to show zero point zero three. So that's basically the only thing that we're correcting. The three percent is still the three percent, we are just correcting that one little figure that they asked us to do.
So the original ordinance was incorrect?
Correct.
Has that went into effect?
They went ahead and honored it last year, however, for this year, the Department of Revenue states that we must submit for corrective form by the beginning of October.
So you're saying this was already voted on, it's just that you're changing the...
The zero?
It's gonna be point, I'm sorry, zero point zero three.
Correct.
So therefore, it's not gonna be the increases I wanted to reflect, but you're just, all you're doing is just changing the verb?
The amount.
Did we change this or did the attorney change this?
I sent that to the attorney. So attorney, the Department of Revenue, they sent us a draft and I believe I put that in your packet as well. So that's the draft that I presented to the attorneys along with last year's nineteen zero twenty-two. I submitted both of those to them and what you have in your hand now is the result of the attorney action.
Okay. Any questions on that? Ready? Yeah, yes, sir.
You're saying this is the corrected version?
Yes. It has a point, it has point zero three.
The front cover, does it have nine two twenty-two? No, that's the over.
Right, you have to put a zero first, zero four.
So the newer that you hold on is branded within, so that order is just becoming twenty, whatever the number is that...
It'll be like, take it back now. Thank you.
It'll be like, right, it'll be like this one.
Zero point zero.
Yes. The next item, I was told to take the guy's toe out. Go back again to Trustee Brewer, a headline update on union agreements on outsourcing, I guess tree movement hydrants.
Thank Mr. Mayor.
You need a mic.
Huh?
You need a mic.
Thank Mr. Mayor. This is to get an update on the union agreements with the Public Works, wanted to get some work done. As you know, we have a hundred thousand dollars set aside in the budget to do some repair of fire hydrants. I'll talk about the points that I got later, but what I would like to do is have the village administrator sort of explain what went on and what took us so long just to get these fire hydrants, we're starting to work on it, get your work, so...
Definitely not work.
Yeah, it works. We got it both working, the clerk got it all worked out. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, board. After a lengthy meeting, many meetings with Trustee Brewer and the unions, they've come to an agreement with us. If we have projects that we propose to them, instead of doing individual hydrants and individual trees, they will look at our proposal as a program. So instead of doing two or three hydrants, they wanna know that we're gonna do twenty hydrants. And they'll, they'll understand, they'll take a different view of us as a village doing this program and letting us outsource that this one time. And the same thing with the trees. They understand that there is a huge trees that are difficult to take down, that they are willing to let us outsource as a one-time project, but not just one tree, they wanna have the amount of trees that we're going to do, whether it be thirty or forty trees. So as a, as a union, obviously their jobs are to make sure that their jobs stay in the village and that their workers do their work. What they're allowing us to do is they're looking at projects as a whole and that'll be supportive of.
Okay. My question is, do we have a price for these projects yet?
Yes, we'll get that to Trustee Brewer. She's been working on that very hard. I do not, Trustee Brewer has done the research on that.
We're gonna present that, that has to be presented.
We'll have to go out to bid on those. That has to be a bidable project, we just can't award that, that has to be...
Hardly?
This is the part of the presentation.
Okay, you got, okay, so you have a presentation?
I have a presentation.
You have a presentation?
Yeah.
So it's just a one-time project? Which I don't really understand because we know we have seventy-five hydrants to fix. We know we have three hundred dead trees to be fixed. There's no way you're gonna, you can incorporate all that into one project. There's gonna be a series of projects, I understand why we're gonna choose a one-time thing and they know they can't do it all in one project.
Well, we've gone a long way in supporting our Public Works this year. They're hiring another employee, hopefully they pass it with the budget, we passed their agreement, moving forward with that. So they're in a different state of mind. At one point, there was a lot of mistrust in this village. They didn't trust this village to do the right thing for the union. They thought they were being undercut. Whether that's right or wrong, that's their philosophy. I can't change that philosophy except to try to work with them and move forward. And moving forward, I've asked them to allow us to go out at a one-time opportunity to get hydrants and trees removed. Hydrants fixed, trees removed. And they've agreed to that. So at this point, I'm looking at a certain number. It may take a year to do that number, but it's a certain number we're gonna work on and come to an agreement with. So that's still vague on my end of what we're... So that's still vague on my end of what we're going to be allowed to do. But they are still gonna be doing hydrants themselves, they're still gonna be cutting trees down themselves internally as our Public Works Department.
And is this disagreement something you're gonna get in writing?
It's gotta be in writing, yes, sir. And that came through the, the union, that didn't come through our staff, it came through the union.
I just have to have a question, what made them change now, they say they don't trust us, why do they all of a sudden trust us?
Well, 'cause I think we've come a long way, I think we've come a long way in regarding to their, their contract. We've come a long way in working on their retro, we've come a long way in paying them their uni, their uniform fees.
We've been doing that before.
And we've been, and we've had another employee.
I'm talking, we've been doing that before, like I stated before, we never, they never missed the checks during this pandemic, so I don't understand what the.
I, and I explained it.
Okay.
All right, so I.
So we're gonna come back with some type of.
I'm gonna come back with a written proposal that both will agree on, that we can agree on as a board.
I'm not talking about as far as money.
Oh, they'll, yes, we'll have to come back with the damage it's gonna cost, and how we're gonna pay.
And then also where is it coming from?
Exactly. Yes, sir.
So Trustee Brewer, you said you have a presentation for that?
Yes, the first project that we're gonna run. It's likely, the first project that we thought were on, uh, involves the, I have two quotes. One is from Straight Line, and the other is from Calumet City. Now, both of these were recommended by Mr. Finch. So there's, these are companies that we have worked with before. So, uh, with the, in reference to Straight Line, they have a quote, and they're gonna sixteen.
Well, what is the project for? What is the project for?
This particular project right here, project number one, is for, uh, fire hydrants. Okay, the first quote that I got from, uh, Straight Line, they're gonna do sixteen trees, and the total cost will be ninety-six thousand dollars.
Where's the tree from?
Uh, five, I'm sorry, I'm still thinking trees. Many for fire hydrants, we talked about this project, fire hydrants, sixteen fire hydrants for ninety-six thousand dollars. That's the first quote for Straight Line.
So, question, is this a replacement or just a repair?
Repair, replacement, if, if, for instance, if they come across a hydrant that only needs maybe a hole or two or something like that, you know, the cost will be reduced. But right now, what they're looking for is replacing all sixteen.
So sixteen full replacements for ninety-six thousand, is that?
Yes. The second quote that I got from Calumet City is they, uh, gonna charge us nine hu, nine thousand four hundred eighty-five, uh, dollars per site. Now, uh, it all depends on.
Can you repeat that, please?
Nine thousand four hundred eighty-five dollars per site. Now, also need to add, this is, uh, time sensitive, and it's a safety issue. Now, uh, each of these, uh, companies went out with, uh, Public Works Director, and they went and looked at each site that they were talking on, uh, looking at, and they came up with these figures. So our task to you is to make sure which ones you wanna go with, because we have six month, sixteen, and this particular project. I haven't gotten to the second one. So I would like, uh, discussion right now on the sixteen fire hydrants for ninety-six thousand dollars or the other, uh, fire hydrants for nine thousand four hundred and eighty-five dollars per hydrant to be fixed. So I'm thinking that up for you for discussion.
I have a question on that, um, first of all, is it Calumet Plumbing or Calumet City? Did you say Calumet?
Calumet City Plumbing.
And now those are only two quotes, did you?
Well, I had three, but the, uh, the, uh, last one said they couldn't do it because, because of the time-sensitive nature of this project, so they had to bow out, so only have two quotes. And, uh, since we've worked with these companies before, and it was recommended by Mr. Finch, I think I would just go with, with one of the two.
With very, with very, um, specification, qualification sheet, anything sent to.
That, you're gonna have to talk to the Public Works, uh, Director, 'cause he has all the, uh, information about the individual fire hydrants that they want repaired, they have notes on everything.
No, no, I'm not saying that, I'm saying you, did you just go out for bid, first of all? Did it go out for bid or was just?
I s, I s, requested quotes for these three companies.
I'm saying, did it go out for bid, is what I'm asking.
I requested quotes for the companies.
So definitely, no, we didn't go out for bid.
No. They were recommended by Mr. Finch, and I requested quotes.
But you're talking about spending a hundred thousand dollars.
Well, we're talking about a safety issue that we have been keeping on, on wraps for I don't know how long.
Trustee, I'm just saying, when you, I just wanna make sure that companies that we're doing or whatever it is, when you go out for bid, it's a universal sheet, and it's, and it gives everybody a chance to bid on the same project under the same type of qualification. And that's all I was asking, I mean, yes, you can go and ask for it and come out and look at it, but there are qualifications that you, that you use, and it has to remain the same per each person that you go out and ask for bid. So you're saying that you didn't go out for bid, this is something that was recommended? And I'm just looking to make sure that they can complete the job that we have, uh, asked for. But you're saying that you've taken the recommendation of a person, and that's Friday and Saturday, but I just wanted to know, did we go out, any other bid, you said no, so, okay, just, just wanted to make that.
Not a question. Well, where do we get the number sixteen from?
The numbers is, is the first one from Straight Line. And you have to also remember that since this is a safety issue, uh, that we could, uh, I guess bypass is the one, is the word, I don't quite know what word you could say, but we can use this because this is a safety issue.
No, I'm saying.
Okay, I mean, just to add on to.
Get back there, get back there, boy.
The bid process.
Because it's a safety issue?
Yes.
That would be more reason that you would want to make sure that it doesn't, like, it's a safety issue, so they can have a proper bid, bond, and insurance.
Well, Mr. Mayor, before they start work on anything, I'm quite sure they have everything. I talked to Kevin about this, we also talked to the union, and everything is in place.
Trustee Brewer, so the number sixteen, like, where did we come, did we tell them we wanna fix sixteen fire hydrants? Or did they just give us that quote?
What I did was, I got a list of fire hydrants that Kevin gave me, and as they went around and talked to everybody, they said, these are the sixteen that Straight Line said they could get fixed during this timeframe. And the other, Calumet, uh, City Plumbing, they just told us sites, they didn't give us a, a specific number or anything.
So how many total fires were on your list? They only did sixteen, but how many were on the total list?
My, my particular list, list has sixty-one.
Sixty-one?
Yes.
So they're gonna, they could fix sixteen out of sixty-one?
Yes.
You know, Trustee Brewer, how, how do we pick the hydrants we're gonna repair?
Well, uh, like I said, uh, Kevin from Public Works talked to both of these vendors, and they walked around and looked at each fire hydrant. And they could get these particular ones fixed within our timeframe.
If I may a little bit add to that, uh, every hydrant that we have in this village is a little different. Some have different valves that need to be changed, it's not simply just taking a, a hydrant top and replacing it. So all this stuff goes straight down to that water line, and it's a eight-inch, I think it's an eight-inch line that comes across. It has to have a shut-off put into it, so we can change the fire hydrant. So the excavation is, was gonna be very costly on this. Some of this stuff, we don't know what's underground, we don't know what valve is needed. We don't know what's gonna, what's gonna happen when we open up this street. So there's gonna be some change cost to this, those are estimates. And I would also tell you that we need to go out to bid for this, we can do it quickly, but you need to bid on that. It's gotta be a bid project.
I would think so, for the, for the reason of, of the safety matter of it. I mean, I understand that, you know, someone said that this person is good or whatever the case may be, but when something happens, we just wanna make sure that, you're talking about a village, so you make, you wanna make sure that you are doing the diligence. This is the first time I've seen that, we would just wanna go, so. What you're asking for now is what, Trustee Brewer, that's what I was gonna try to find out, what are you asking?
Well, what I'm asking for, I wanted to choose one of these, um, vendors to, so we could start the project because of, uh, time-sensitive issue, and also, um, because of the safety, uh, factor involved. Uh, uh, these, uh, I just wanted some discussion on it, and if there's, if we have to go to bid, that's fine. But you just gotta keep this in mind, that, uh, since we gotta go to bid, it's gonna take us a little bit, uh, longer to get these fire hydrants, uh, fixed. Now, also remind you that we have the hu, a hundred thousand dollars in, already in the budget, so the money's there. So, um, that can't be, uh, I guess, moved or anything. So that's what I'm asking for, discussions on.
Just, excuse me, so then if we do this, it won't, we won't be able to do the trees?
Oh, no, this is, that, trees is the next project, this is project number one.
Thank you, okay.
So I just wanted some discussion on this, this partic, particular project only involves fire hydrants.
Okay, four hundred thousand, okay.
Yes.
Trustee Todd, I think you had your hand up first.
I think Debbie did.
Okay, Debbie, Trustee Williams.
Thank you. So if I understand correctly, the mic again. So if I understand correctly, the sixteen fire hydrants, ninety-six thousand dollars, that's approximately six thousand dollars per hydrant. But you're saying what Mr. Hurkus just said was, we don't know what we're gonna find once we start excavating. Could be a different situation. How do we gauge the cost of what's gonna hap, and we can't possibly, it's hidden damage. You don't know what you're gonna find until you get down there. So I think I agree that maybe we should go out to bid, and we should have some parameters in there as to how we're going to charge or how we're going to pay for anything that might be found underneath, 'cause we don't know. First of all, um, I know the safety issue, I know we've been talking about this for a long time. But while one of these companies, while we're going out to bid, and we choose a company, in the meantime, are we planning on having Public Works start with another sixteen, or ten, or fifteen, or whatever? So is that also in the plan? We have one point two million dollars in the water fund, we should be fixing some hydrants. In my opinion, I don't think one person is enough for the Public Works Department to help get this done. If we've got one point two million dollars in the water fund, I think we should be trying to put another person on and have that person dedicated to fire hydrants, because we have a lot of fire hydrants, some are multiple on one block. And that's really a safety hazard. And the other question I have was, um, does Public Works have a priority list where they're aware of which ones are the priority, which ones are gonna require the excavation, which ones they can and cannot do, so which ones we would have to outsource? Okay, so they can start working on the, what may be just a repair, but I, I do agree that we should probably go out to bid. I know it's a safety issue, but there's a lot of unknowns that I don't think we're taking into effect. And I think somebody who's more capable than us should write up the bid process, so that we cover ourselves for anything that could possibly come our way later on. I mean, I appreciate the hard work that you've done and gotten quotes and things, but we have to cover ourselves for hidden damage.
Trustee, uh, Todd?
I just wanted to know, um, Trustee Brewer, is this to replace, put a new, I mean, a new hydrant in for six thousand dollars?
Yes, the six thousand dollars, if you pay for that particular hydrant at six thousand, that's probably a replacement. But as I said, a repair replacement, if it costs less, then that's what we'll, we'll charge less. Kevin has gone out and he has, uh, uh, taken a look at all the hydrants, and he's chosen the ones that he think could be fixed, uh, before the weather change.
So they could be fixed or replaced?
Fixed, replaced, done. Because one, I mean, for example, one was hit by a car, they think we could get that in there. You know, things of that, like that nature that he knows about, you know, can be replaced right away. So it's all up to his, um, uh, Kevin.
Thank you.
Trustee, uh, Bell?
Yeah, Kevin said over and over, as soon as they open that ground up, you never know. You might change six-foot stick, you might change sixteen-foot, you could change sixty-foot. They replaced half a street at one time, because it just, the bell just kept cracking all the way down the line. You know, they'd go back and they'd re-dig every couple days. That's why we have so many holes around town, so it's, it's an unforeseen issue.
Well, you know, I, I understand that we, and for us, we've been around here a while, we know we have big problems with these fire hydrants, but we have to start somewhere. And the Public Works Director has, uh, looking to, has looked into all these issues, and, uh, he has a, a gauge on what can and cannot be done. And, uh, you know, uh, you have to start somewhere. I mean, yeah.
Okay, Trustee, uh, Brad?
So, yeah, I agree, we do have to start somewhere, but we still don't know what the union is gonna say in regards to, you said that one project. Like, is that twenty-five hydrants, is that five, is that ten? Like, we don't know that part, we need to get that part nailed down first, then go back and then get the bid for the number of projects that we can fit, be fixed, right? 'Cause I mean.
We have to put the quotes together, I mean, you're right, I'll add it on, definitely. I have the quotes that the union, the number, number of.
So, oh, okay, good. But in regards to the hydrants versus the trees, are we as a board saying that we chose hydrants as a priority? Not saying, you know, right or wrong, but is that what we're saying we're gonna do?
We're not, we're not, she had to say it, she had to say it.
Oh, okay, um, Trustee, man?
Thank you, um, you just made me lose my train of thought. I want, what I, what I'm trying to figure out is, oh, I know what it was, it's two separate issues. It's the fact that the union has agreed not to breed if we outsource, that's the first issue. So you're gonna, you're gonna get that hurdle first, okay. How we get started with actually doing the work is a separate issue. So whether we're gonna outsource, how many fire hydrant, hydrants we're gonna do, we could, we could always put a dollar sign up there. But I think to give anybody sixteen fire hydrants, um, to, uh, show us what we may or may not have to do, that's a lot. So if we were to go out to bid, is, could it be more like per site or per fire hydrant? Or, I mean, just to say, give somebody a contract for sixteen, um, fire hydrants, when there could be sixteen different issues. Uh, I don't know how that works. But I know you're doing two different things here, you're doing the union, which I think you pretty much have solved that issue. That's, and, and we're gonna bring that to the union, you're gonna bring it to us. When it comes down to the ninety-six thousand dollars, there's really no guarantee on how much it's gonna be, and there could be sixteen different issues. I think that's a, a big number to start with, to outsource at the beginning, we can always go back and add.
I think if you look at it, we're gonna say, we're gonna do sixteen, and then we can serve it up with the four, the five, the company, see how they handle.
That's what I'm saying.
Sage it, that may work, but if everybody's agreeing, if we all start looking forward on it, it just keeps spinning a wheel.
I agree.
We got past the union issue, difficult, let's get past the funding issue.
Right.
And then let's get past the, the, uh, the installment issue.
So, yeah, I, I agree, but in the meantime, our fires being fixed right now by Public Works, like, as of right now.
They have plans to start doing it equally at the same time that this company would start doing the right. Are they doing that right now, or is it, they don't?
Okay, uh, you said you, okay, we'll move on. Are you getting ready to explain to us about the hazards, or just?
Well, yes, 'cause maybe we could talk over them at the same time. Now, the second project is, uh, the money that was in the, um, they call it, is it called the grand trump now? The C N fund, okay, that we found out that there's a hundred forty-one thousand dollars in the fund. Now, uh, with the help of village administrator, uh, we found out that the, uh, railroad is, has agreed to let us use the funds world, you know, all over the village. Now, since we talked about sixteen for the first project, I proposed that we do four more, which is twenty, that's a complete project. And we, there's seventy-nine trees that have to be cut or taken down. It's seventy-nine on the north side. Okay, so.
You can't, you can't split it up like that, you can't say just seventy-nine trees on the north side, I mean, how many did they have total in the village? 'Cause you just can't single out one area of the village and forget about that, that, please don't, don't, don't do that, don't do it like that. I mean, now you're talking about having a big problem. So we're only gonna do this on the north side, and we're not gonna do the south side or whatever. That, that's a problem.
I'm not finished, everybody's interjecting, okay.
What we talked about with the union dividing some of the suburbs, the union went to one side, have a solid. the union went to one side, down the south, and then you went to the other side.
That's, that's...
Wasn't seen.
That was my next...
We kind of divided it, not all. Now they would understand moving forward with the project. Now, we can go with a certain number, we can go with a certain tree size, but they just wanna make sure that if it's a project, it is not just randomly picking what you think they should be doing. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Not really, because you're still saying that you're going to second-gain the town. If you're gonna take trees down, then you should say throughout the village. Believe me, you, you've just opened yourself up, because you're gonna get phone calls. You may not, but it's gonna be phone calls, and why not my trees? I'm on the south side, you're not gonna do mine.
Well, if you guys let me finish the presentation, maybe I can tell you where it's gonna be. No, yeah, I got cut off. Okay? We're talking about seventy-nine trees, okay? Some will be on the north side, and others would be on the south side, according to, uh, the Public Works Director. Now, uh, the seventy-nine trees will cost three to five thousand apiece to take down. Okay? Uh, Kevin has also been through the village and sort of, um, marked out which trees need to go first. And there's seventy-nine of them. And, uh, some on the north side, some on the south side. So what I propose we do is to take the four, uh, the, do the four fire hydrants from the, uh, CN Fund, and in addition, work on the seventy-nine trees.
And you're spending what, per tree?
Three to five thousand.
So, uh, two questions. So, are, are we gonna choose between which project we're gonna, gonna go with? Like, project one or project two? Is that, is that what you wanna do tonight? Choose which project? And then, I guess my second question is, I would like to have seen Director Weller here, if, you know, we have all these questions, and so he can explain some of this, we can ask him questions as well.
It's just Brewer and you can go, is there discussing?
You got a mic?
Okay. Okay, go ahead and say your question.
Well, there's, there's really, uh, only discussions on, um, project one. We need additional information from the union, uh, on how to have those certain things for the union. And since we have a hundred thousand dollars, I know I could at least get, we can at least get sixteen fire hydrants fixed. Now, with the, uh, second project, which is two sets of money, that's why I had to, uh, describe it as two sets of money, that for those fire hydrants can be used and make the, uh, first, um, project complete with twenty fire hydrants that had to be replaced. And the rest of the money will be used for tree, uh, removal.
Well, isn't that two separate projects?
They're two separate projects, but they, I'm, I'm explaining, trying to explain to you where the money is coming from.
I, I get that, but the union said one project. And you're talking...
I'm sorry, who said one?
The union said one project, but you're talking about two separate projects.
No. I don't, I don't think, um, the village administrator, uh, we agreed to both, right? Then we...
If the union had gone with a project, they have no problem outsourcing the trees and the hydrants. But if it is, it has to be a project. It can't be a single tree that they can take down right away. It has to be a number, the village is going to accommodate this two people. So it is a project. Two separate projects working at the same time.
Can you do a combination of trees and fire hydrants in one project?
That's...
I think they're gonna need clarity on that in writing, what they're gonna allow, what they should do. And also, I think both projects should go out to bid. Definitely, you know...
Trustee, uh, Williams?
Uh, thank you. I was just gonna basically say the same thing, but I'm really kind of, um, you said, you gotta have, you got a hundred thousand dollars, and we know what you're saying. But what if the sixteen fire hydrants that we allocate in that project, what if one runs over into a ten thousand dollar project, part of the project? So we, do we really have to put, um, um, an item number on how many we're gonna fix? Because one, one fire hydrant could cost ten thousand, and the other one come close to, uh, the other fourteen come close to six. Another one costs eight. So are we gonna allow for extra monies to come from somewhere else? Or do we have to have a specific amount that we have to do at one time? We can't break this up like so many down, so many in the spring, or just have a plan? Because it seems like we are moving just a little too quickly. But can we plan to get these done?
Well, the, the plan is that we have a hundred thousand dollars at first for these fire hydrants. Now, uh, it might be that he could fix more than sixteen. And all, we're concentrating on the money. We have a hundred thousand dollars here to spend on fire hydrant repairs. You know, it might, some might cost more than, um, ten thousand or so, but we're not gonna exceed the hundred thousand dollars. Okay? That, that's, uh, what we agreed to, and that's the project. Now, when I, when they talk about the, uh, I know that you can get, uh, sixteen, at least sixteen done. You never know until they get out there and start working. And, and there's no way to gauge that unless they're out there actually doing the job.
All right. Trustee, uh...
Last question, there it is. So last week, when you talked about the hundred thousand from CN that they said they will allow us to use. Now, have, have they given us anything in writing saying, hey, we can, you can use this hundred thousand dollars out of this money and for whatever?
Remember, why is she, the hundred thousand, you have to go up, up, within that, for a project? With CN money, it's a hundred and forty thousand. And if order to pass that, that's, that gives us permission to use it for fire hydrants and trees.
So are they saying that we can use that for, for whatever?
Not whatever. Safety issues. Trees and hydrants were specific.
Okay, and a hundred thousand, you talked about the budget, but that was in, the budget has not passed yet?
Yeah, that's correct. Budget that hopefully will be passed on Tuesday, but yes, sir. So again, let me go back. Um, the hundred thousand that's being talked about was allocated in the budget for the fire hydrants out of the water fund. That was specifically done because Trustee Brewer had asked that. The second one was the CN money, which a contract was received from the village and I forwarded to the mayor, um, that will allow us to use that CN fund for hydrants or trees, whatever the village...
Well, for hydrants and trees.
Uh, F O R, not F U R, right. Four hydrants and trees.
Yeah.
Correct. That is exactly what it was said. Correct, man?
Yes, well, Trustee, uh, Bell?
A hundred forty-one thousand, so if it's ten thousand a hydrant, you're talking four hydrants, right? That's forty grand. That means it's sixty-seven or a hundred, about a hundred grand.
No.
Huh?
Six thousand. No.
Someone just said ten thousand dollars.
Six thousand, uh, six thousand per hydrant, sixteen hydrants gives you ninety-six thousand.
What, that's...
That's providing you don't have to change nothing else. And then, you know, that's gonna leave you a hundred, roughly a hundred, hundred times what to, to, to cut down seventy-some trees?
Well...
Well, I didn't see that paper that you're looking at. Um, I think we need details on exactly what they're gonna do for ninety-six thousand dollars for the sixteen hydrants. I think both projects are safety issues, and we need to start somewhere. Who will really get that? I mean, trees have been done for years, and hydrants have been worked. Well, we need to go about it the right way. We need to see in writing what they're gonna do for the village for ninety-six thousand dollars, or like the other one, nine thousand four hundred and something, per site. I mean, we need to see that. And then we definitely need to get information from the union, and definitely air bids for all projects.
Okay, the reason, uh, the hydrants themselves, they can bid, but they're gonna give you cost overruns. In other words, they're gonna put in that bid that they have cost overruns. You know, that they're not responsible for. Because once they open up a hydrant, anything can happen. The trees themselves, they can come out of bed and they can actually see which trees they are. And at the price, at seventy-nine trees, at six thousand dollars, you're talking about...
Three to five thousand.
Pardon me?
Three to five thousand.
Okay, we're still talking three thousand dollars.
Well, Mr. Mayor, just real quick...
So I'm just saying that they need to, if you're gonna have them, they can look, they can bid on the tree, they can bid on both of them. But the other one, I'm just letting you know that it's gonna be, they cannot tell you exactly because the fire hydrants may have problems once they get into the trees. They can see what it takes to knock them down. So you're talking about roughly four hundred thousand dollars. And, um, a hundred thousand of the bids on fire hydrants, three hundred pieces of trees. I mean, okay, you said you have the money in there, but I'd rather look and, I'd rather see a bid especially than come through that kind of line. And I also would like to see a project, um, you know, so...
Okay, well, we'll, we'll give you, uh, information on it.
Well, you have to, you have, someone has to put that bid package together.
We, we're gonna do that, and, but the question is, we, this is a discussion. This is a discussion.
This is under discussion, right? This is under discussion. This is, this is, you're right, this is a huge undertaking with a lot of answers that, questions that you don't have answers to. I understand that. It's under discussion. Trustee Brewer has done a wonderful job of keeping the foot on the pedal. Getting, let me finish and get this at least moving forward, right? Well, I'll give her the kudos for that. You're right, this has to go out to bid. There's a lot of qualifications, specifications, I have no idea are gonna be undertaken here. What kind of trees, what size, what hydrant, what's underneath there, that we don't know.
That's what I'm asking. So are you asking?
So we're asking for us to go forward.
Are you asking to go forward and go out for bid?
Put out some, we have to put some RFPs out. We have to put some qualifications out first.
But you have to put, you have, someone has to do that thing.
Correct, sir.
But what about, what about the union part? The union part should be first.
The union part will be first. So once I get a handle on the cost, so they kinda go together. You know, so I have to find out the cost, how many we can fit in, how many we can be a project, how many they're gonna agree will be a project. So it's a lot of moving parts. I understand. And that is, it's almost a moving forward, that's what I'm, we're asking the board, is to move forward on this and get something done for the residents.
Yeah, get something done for the residents.
You go, okay, I'm saying that, okay, the last thing is utilization of phone. I think you were translating to a...
We did some...
Well, yeah, those are a combination of two. I just want everybody to know we only have a hundred and forty-one thousand dollars that we're using for the trees and the four fire hydrants. Uh, that's...
No, that's gonna be, I'm sorry, that's, I was told that was gonna be, uh, explained by, um, Mr. Hurkus. I just wanna make sure, Trustee Brewer, that includes your...
Well, no, I just wanna make sure they know how much money we're talking about when we're sending out bids. We can't overbid that, and, uh, they have to give us specifications.
Bid is a bid.
We can't over, uh, bid that a hundred thousand dollars. We can't go over that.
Bid is a bid. It's up to you to take it. And things be...
They could bid whatever they wanna bid, but we can't go over a hundred thousand dollars, plus the hundred and forty-one thousand dollars for the four fire hydrants and the trees.
That becomes a difficulty, because if we bid or go the other way.
On that particular item, this particular topic, yes, Trustee Brewer?
So what are we comparing this to?
That's what I asked.
Who are we going to, Captain, pull that...
They said, I asked that same question. I don't know. So now, so you're gonna ask...
I have to talk to our engineer and our attorneys, yes.
Okay.
It has to go to professionals.
Okay.
It has to go to professionals.
And it will cost, so we have to factor...
Well, yeah, that's the part that you have to factor, that's part of the bidding process. Okay. It's nice to hear the fan is out right now.
I've talked to Jim already many times about it.
You look around like, okay. Uh, all right, so Trustee Brewer, can you move on to the next?
It's his pleasure.
No, that's it for me.
Okay. Okay, next item is, um, we're gonna start with the Comcast cable contract, uh...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. President, you, uh, have received a copy of the Comcast contract. Um, this is ran by our attorney, uh, Liz Schein from the Olson Group. Uh, she has approved it. Uh, we sat and talked to the Comcast. The only really change that they're looking at for us, for our franchise agreement, we still make about a little under a hundred thousand dollars a year from Comcast we get. But their issue is that any, there's no one who will, our village get free cable. We used to get free cable. Our police department, our fire department, our village hall. If anybody had, at this point, it's gonna be cost, if we still wanna keep it.
I mean, why?
If that passed the legislature down in Springfield.
No, I mean, they can charge that. It's not passed that they have to charge us.
No, they don't have to charge anybody.
Before, what it said is, um, that, you know, the municipality do get free. So they decided now something that's not in there, they're going to charge.
Uh, the legislature in Springfield changed the legislation that will allow them to do so.
Just allow them to charge. They don't have to charge.
They don't have to, no.
Correct.
It's still up in their, it's still their decision.
Pardon me?
It is still up to the, of Comcast to make that decision.
And so they made the decision to charge.
No, they, they said there's an opportunity for them to charge. They have not done so as of yet.
But this, that they will charge?
They could. But they will.
Okay. I can't, I can't, they build them, they could. I mean, okay, so they go, do they say how much they're charging us, and in what grade?
I will get that number to you, sir.
Okay. So I mean, I like to know that it was gonna be charged that, you know, it's not gonna be over every other month when they decide to do an upgrade or whatever. And you're right, if that's the case, then, you know, because we do use it, uh, in the different, in the different buildings. So, I mean, if they're gonna charge, then we'll have to make a decision on what, you know, what it is to move on, move forward with on that. But I just wanted to find out from them. Have you talked to them at all?
I have. So I was at a phone conference with our attorney and Comcast going over the changes that they wanted. And you can see some of the changes that the attorney wanted in the contract. Um, see whether they're scratched out, what she put in there to change.
So then I, this new contract, I mean, obviously, did I give it up anyway?
They gave us the franchise fee.
We got that anyway. That's the explanation. That's the law.
Nothing, nothing else.
The village, I mean, that's franchise fee, so they, the, the village, I understand. Have they given us any, any, anything else?
No, sir.
Okay. Trustee Bell?
I know the fire department, their cable goes for twenty years.
I don't know about twenty years. But, uh, okay, I just...
Cable has changed a lot.
Yeah, it has.
Each year, they get their own little building, that Comcast would have a main office there, and you'd be able to do billing and payments, and that's all changed. Everything has changed with Comcast.
But the money that they're, they're giving us is actually being paid for by the residents.
By the residents, that's correct.
So not that giving us, that's, you know, go ahead.
Mr. Hurkus, were you, on our behalf, you know, negotiate and try to at least...
I asked him for the free cable. I said, are you gonna charge us? Is that a guarantee you're gonna charge us? And the answer was, we haven't decided.
But then what is the sign?
So we can't do this right now?
They want us to sign this, but then...
No, that's in the legislation, whether they use the charge or not. The charge is in there. It's in the contract. It's in all contracts.
Okay, so I'm asking, if they can take that out, then, you know, we can sign it tomorrow.
So if they're gonna tell us, yeah, they're charging us, then, okay, we'll sign it, but it's like, we can't sign it on a possibility.
So what it says in the contract is they have the ability to charge us.
Right, but you, you, right now you're saying that have it, but they could.
They have that capability, but they, at this point, are not. So, and we'll tell you that eventually they're gonna start charging us. And I'll get a cost on it.
Okay, um, next thing, um, is the six B for my.
Yes, sir, I think this is my last one to talk about, okay.
Okay, you handle it. No, no, I want him to go back.
We'll go back with some, we'll go back and committee.
And go back and come back to us.
Some answers, sure. Thank you. Um, so the, the, well, the next issue that I have is the six B and I have it under minority trucking, which is the name of the trucking company, it's minority, actually, it's minority auto handlers, is there a? Um, they're our end management in the Saw Point redevelopment, uh, industry, they had a, two thousand and ten, they applied for a six B with this village, the village gave them the six B. They'd asked for a renewal of another ten years, uh, it's, it's a tax deferment for the property taxes. Uh, and it's about sixty percent, so it doesn't, they do very well. They have about a hundred trucks that come through their yard every, every day, they have thirty employees that come into this village every day, and they're asking for the extension of the six B.
Okay, how many pins do they have on that?
Now, I have that, I have that, I have it for you, they have, uh, six pins. I'll give that to you.
And then also, are they, uh?
So under the pink, you'll see the, uh, six pins that they, uh, have under their jurisdiction. Then the property taxes, two thousand and seventeen property tax, and then this was the taxes without incentive, so it would be approximately if they didn't have the six B.
Okay, you're saying which one would be the?
So if you look at, um.
So they're saving these different, on each, because each pin is a, is a.
Individual tax, yes, sir.
So they're saving. So without the incentive, it shows one price, and with the incentive, it shows another price, so. And it shows that at the end is what we would lose for each one, correct?
Yes, correct. Under, uh, net annual impact.
Because they still do get the, uh, they're still within the TIF, so therefore, that's also helping their RTOs.
I'm not sure where they're getting out of the TIF.
I mean, they, they don't have to, um, the TIF money stays into the TIF, like all, all.
Well, TIF money stays in the TIF, I'm not sure what this company is getting out of it.
Well, I mean, they have, their property tax.
Their tax, their property tax, their increment goes into the TIF, correct? So they're getting the advantage of the streets or the water tunnel, the new sign coming in, yes, sir. But this is the actual property tax abatement.
Are they asking, how many years, are they asking, ten years?
They're ten-year increments, yes, sir. So it's a substantial number, and again, they, I don't think they plan on moving out, but I think that, you know, this is an incentive that would bring businesses in, and that's what it's used for, the six B.
Well, yeah, I mean, they, they use that for, don't have to charge.
And if, you know, if you're eligible, I think it's an opportunity for anyone to take. So may I ask you just permission to extend that for another ten years?
Any question?
I think it's a good idea to extend it.
And they still follow the need eligibility and guidelines, I don't think, I don't know. Is anyone, everyone is saying with the Texas, and how do you last? Everybody else? When, when, when do they want the, uh, when does this, uh, six B expire?
December of this year. Yes, sir, they gave us plenty of time, I believe. I went over there, took a tour of the facility, the, uh, the, they actually are the distributor for auto parts, so the vehicles that are being made, they ship them to different, different companies across the country from our location.
I'm just, have, can you explain, what would happen if we didn't give them a six B, what would, what would that mean?
I did explain that to them.
They're not gonna leave.
May go to another community.
The money that, that we're, um, allowing into a platform, they sort of have to cook higher for this, we can just give them the okay on our behalf, and this is the money that we won't, uh, we won't get. It's basically our money, and we're saying, okay, we can give you a six B.
Uh, yes and no, it's, it's, it's county money, so it goes to everybody, it goes to your schools, it goes to your parks, it goes to the county, it goes to, so it's everything, right? Part of it is the village money, how much of that money, I can, I can't, what is it, maybe seven percent is village money, I'm not exactly sure of the amount that saw the village taxes on the property tax, but this is property tax money.
Right, that's what I'm saying, it's our money that, that we would get a lot of, and the TIF also is, is, is money that, yeah, it stays within the TIF, so.
I understand.
Which one, that's what I wanted to find out, which, out of, out of these different categories, what is our what is our cut, as you say, for each one of these, uh, is it what you have on the incentive?
So what I have on here is I have the property tax bill of twenty seventeen, and then what their taxes would be without the incentive. The assessed evaluation with their properties, this is their total tax bill.
Correct. Okay, so yeah, so it's a, it's a forceful tax revenue based on rate and incentive. Any, any question? So this has to be, you have a.
This has to be voted on, yes, sir.
Well, yeah, it has to be, uh, they have to, uh, do audits for this.
Orders, yes, sir.
And then, uh.
Okay.
We have until December, so.
It's okay to move forward.
I'm just gonna ask, is that, I'm asking the board, is that okay to move, anybody have any objections to not moving forward? Anybody have any questions about, okay? All right, next one, Paylocity.
I'm trying to take a break.
I'm gonna wait, no, hold on just a second, you, you still have?
I do, I can wait for that, Paylocity, and the gentleman is here from a different company.
Okay.
I, I can wait.
No, no, come on up, sir. I know the, the chair's not bad. I think that mic is still hot.
Uh, I sent, uh, Mr. Finch, uh, the. I sent Mr. Finch the proposal and over, do you guys have that in front of you right now?
I think I do. Oh, you want to use the, uh? There's a screen you keep.
Yeah, I think.
There you go. He's gonna walk up, I'll leave the chair, the thing coming closed.
Thank you very much. So while this is getting powered up, how much do you guys know about, uh, Paylocity?
Zero.
Okay, so, um, so Paylocity is a payroll and HR software company, so you guys are using ADP for, uh, that service today. We were founded in nineteen ninety-seven out of Homewood, Illinois, and as of late, Sonia, Mr. Finch, and Michelle and I have kind of explored the options versus what you guys are doing with ADP. Uh, before Paylocity, before my time at Paylocity, the last two years I've spent here, Paylocity, I worked with ADP for about six years, so I know their services pretty well. We have over a hundred and forty municipalities that we do business with in the state of Illinois, uh, some of the more, or some of the closer ones are, uh, Richland Park, Madison, Elsie. Just so we can kind of all view it together. So, we, uh, did an evaluation of what you guys are doing with ADP, what services you're utilizing, and then kind of what, uh, what future state looks like for the village and, and what we can do for the employees in terms of payroll and HR. Uh, and we found, really outside of payroll, six or seven things that we can assist the village with, um, and in that, we found that with, with ADP today, your customer service, uh, that you're getting, um, you're experiencing long hold times, having trouble talking with multiple contacts when you're, uh, when you're getting service. Um, at Paylocity, we're gonna give you a dedicated customer service representative, so not only do you pay your own HR, but there's gonna be a dedicated point of contact, uh, that helps, um, the HR administrator and the finance director. Uh, we have a less than one-minute hold time today and ninety-seven percent retention rate, customer service is where we really start to differentiate ADP, it's one of the biggest reasons why I, uh, I changed, uh, companies. Uh, the second thing we notify, or we noticed is, uh, health insurance enrollment during our conversations, uh, we discussed that health insurance enrollment data for the employees of the village is done, uh, through Blue Cross online, but it doesn't communicate with the payroll system. So those deductions come out of everybody's check, uh, what we can do is, is we can connect the Blue Cross Blue Shield, we can streamline that enrollment through our benefits administration system. When the employees pick their plans, that data will send directly to the payroll and HR system, if something changes in Blue Cross, we'll pull data from there to make sure it's updated. Uh, really what this was, the goal of this, this, these conversations were, as we kind of go through these next few, to kind of automate, uh, manual processes, make things move faster within the village, make the employees have a better experience when it comes to dealing with technology and their mobile app. Uh, compliance is really important today, uh, the village is filing all compliance forms in terms of ACA, of the Affordable Care Act, ten ninety-four and ten ninety-five Cs are done manually on paper. Uh, Paylocity's gonna streamline all of this, we're gonna take care of not only this, but EEO one, if the village ever approaches a hundred employees, we'll take care of that. We'll do compliance courses, we'll have access, the employees will have access to sexual harassment courses, diversity courses, uh, and we'll load different courses in as things change within the, the workplace. Uh, it's part of our compliance dashboard, there's really not much the village is getting today, uh, in terms of this topic for me to be. Uh, onboarding, so when the village hires employees today, there's some paper forms that they have to fill out to come on board, most organizations you see, right, when you start, everyone can remember their first day at a company, where they spend about forty-five minutes filling out paper forms. With Paylocity, they can do it from the mobile app or on the computer, it takes about fifteen to twenty minutes, I used that same system when I started at Paylocity, it took me, uh, twenty minutes to upload all my driver's license, my I nine, I nine forms, verify all that online, that fed into my administrator, and they actually followed up and asked if I had any questions. So my experience when I started at the organization would be very similar to if an employee started here and you were leveraging that system, uh, they have a, a real good experience, right? Your first day is not about filling out paperwork, it's about learning about the organization and how you can help, so this is just one way that we identified that we could, we could help with onboarding. Uh, time and attendance was pretty important at the village, well, we talked with Anthony about, uh, how that's done through ADP today. Um, Mr. Finch liked that our, our system, uh, can streamline the administrative component of time, uh, geo fence around the village, so the employees can use their smartphones to clock in and clock out within three feet of whatever geo fence be set up. And that can be in multiple locations, it doesn't just have to be here on site, it could be wherever else the employees need to clock in. This feeds directly into, uh, the payroll process, so when the payroll person goes to run the payroll, the hours are already in there, they can just make changes and edits if there's a mis bunch. Yeah, sure, can you hear me okay now? Can you hear me okay now? Is that better? You guys want me to start again, or is that okay? Okay, sorry about that, sorry, I tried to move quick for you guys, I apologize, I didn't want to take up a ton of time. So, with the time component, we have COVID prepared clocks that are coming out, so those clocks will be live in January, and basically what that means is, is it's gonna take the employee's temperature, it'll store that data, it's gonna have facial recognition, so if they're wearing a mask, it'll still recognize their face to make sure that they are who they say they are. As well as, uh, not only store that data, but facial recognition and then voice activation, so they don't have to touch anything, so they can say, you know, hey, Aaron, uh, one, two, three, four employee, clock in, and it's gonna activate like Siri on your smartphone. This could be really big, um, if, if the workplace continues to require that this stuff exists, so just know that this stuff's available, but, uh, we did, uh, evaluate the computer method, being able to clock in and out on the computer, uh, kiosk, an iPad, or, uh, the phone and geo method. The last two pieces that we covered, the last two pieces we reviewed were paid time off and performance. Um, today, a lot of the balances for paid time off, which is vacation, sick, personal time, are tracked either manually or, or some data is managed through ADP, it's kind of siloed from what we discovered. Uh, Paylocity can automate the entire process by putting everything in there, but also providing a technology that's gonna allow the employees to clock, or to, to submit time through their mobile device. And then that time can be approved by, uh, a manager or a supervisor, and then updates their balance accordingly. This is good for a lot of the, the different contracts you guys may have, how you need to, to track PTO time for, uh, fire, police, and all the different positions. Uh, last but not least, performance, uh, right now the village is actually preparing to go through a performance review process with the employees. Uh, we can assist with this project, help the village leverage our technology to kind of automate that process, they can do performance reviews in the system, and then these can be referenced for future reviews, self-assessments can be done on the mobile, mobile device, it's just gonna help the administrator, and, you know, really the idea behind comparing Paylocity to ADP was, one, to make sure that the cost was the same or less, but also to kind of streamline, automate some of the tasks that the HR administration and, and finance director are doing within, uh, that system. I can open it up for questions now?
Oh, okay. Uh, I do have a couple, you had mentioned about the courses, are these courses included in the price or are these separate?
Uh, they're included.
They're included?
Yes.
So if they need, what the employees need help on whatever it is that you offer, they can.
Yep.
Okay. And then, I'm sure the time clocks is, is, uh, is, is an option, correct?
Yep, so right now, uh, what I'll show you here, the proposal, it'll include, uh, the kiosk method, the computer, and, uh, the, uh, the phone, and then the geo fences included in that cost. If you guys wanna buy those physical, we call them COVID prepared clocks, the pandemic prepared clocks, uh, those will be a separate cost, but, um, this monthly cost, I'll scroll down here to the second page so you guys can review it, is gonna include all the services you see on the left. And that's, time, time is part of that. And then all those methods we talked about. Any questions, any other questions?
Is this, uh, an agreement, uh, for a certain amount of time?
It's a month-to-month agreement.
Month-to-month?
Yeah.
And if you want to terminate, is that thirty-day notice, sixty-day?
Uh, it's typically thirty days, yeah.
Either party?
Yeah.
Well, you guys don't have a council.
Yeah, most times we don't. If, uh, if you'd like, I can go through kind of the proposal high level, just everything that you'd be getting.
Look, I'm looking at this, um, estimated cost per month, is that per month, where it says, um, year and fees, or is that?
So there's, there's two costs.
Oh, here it is, right here, twelve, eleven hundred dollars per month.
Yeah, eleven hundred dollars per month. Yeah, that's everything that includes, you can cut as many checks as you want, if there's an errant payroll, you have to recut a check or reissue a payroll, there's no, no charge for that today, ADP's charging you guys for that, so if something, uh, happens in the payroll where there's a zero that's not supposed to be there, or whatever, and that check needs to be voided and corrected, uh, ADP charges for that today. If that happens in our system, you can just make that adjustment, you're paying a monthly subscription fee to us, so you can use, uh, whatever you want in the system as often as you like.
My customer service, that was a big issue. You said that you have, you're, you're located in Homewood?
Uh, our, we were founded in Homewood in nineteen ninety-seven, our, our main headquarters today is in, uh, Schaumburg, Illinois.
Okay, is there any, okay, because a lot of times we have a problem with trying to connect with someone and.
Sure.
Uh, is it, is, is your connection basically online, or just can we actually get somebody to come out?
Yep, so there's a, a couple of different things that are gonna be available as far as service, uh, there's the chat, right, so you can just chat back and forth if it's something quick. Uh, our peak system, which is a system in the database that's available to administrators and employees, they can train themselves on whatever they wish, something easy like changing their W four information, direct deposit, something like that. And then we have our, our customer service team, there's a dedicated person assigned to each business, that person sits in a team of people, so that way they can manage the volume, and we maintain a less than one hold time, and we get a response time via email for twenty-four hours. Now, as far as a local contact, I'm from, I'm from Atlantic, so not far from here, you know, the area well, I grew up on the southwest side, so, um, everyone has my cell phone that does business with me. So as far as having somebody come out here in person to make sure things are, are going correctly, I'd be more than happy to do that to, to end the business of the village, uh, it's kind of how I build my brand and how I grow my business. If I have happy customers, they're, they're more likely to refer me, and if I have to come on site to do that, then absolutely, that's what I'll do.
For?
Go ahead.
For the, for the eleven hundred, that's, does not, does that include the clock, or no?
That would include, uh, the phone, clocking in and out like geo fence, so they can be within three feet of a perimeter that we set, a kiosk, so you guys could set up an iPad or something that they can walk up to and clock in and out physically. Uh, that has facial recognition in that kiosk mode, or we can restrict the computers' IP address, so only when they're in the building using that specific computer can they clock in and clock out. Now, if the clocks are something that we wanna explore, uh, we for sure can do that, I'll get you guys pricing on that, uh, they just, you know, you can, as you can imagine, it's brand new, so they just rolled that stuff out a couple of weeks ago, so I, I'd have to get some pricing over to, to you guys to review if you guys wanted a physical clock that could do that.
And it can be multiple parameters.
Yep, correct, yep. And that cost includes the multiple parameters.
For?
Go ahead.
For the W twos, I see you have a price of four, six, or seven down there.
Yep.
Now, that's for an actual paper copy, because I'm, so you can electronically as well, I know.
Yep.
But is this for the actual paper copy, or is this the cost of actually creating that W two for the year?
Uh, it's both, so it's to create it, make sure that it's filed and, and legit with the IRS and the state, and then also, uh, we send paper copies to the village so that they can be provided to the employees. Um, and then also, they have access through the mobile app to all their tax documents, so pay stubs, W twos, and that's gonna be for the length that you're with us, so we never purge or archive any data, so everything that you do with us will be stored in there for as long as you're with us. Uh, and we even could go as far as to pull in the data out of ADP and put that in there too, so you guys have access to that.
Uh, sometimes, you know, something might come up and we'd have to send out corrected W twos, would that be an extra, another additional four, six, or seven?
Um, so you have to send the W twos, like an extra one out?
Yeah, let's say, you know, we need to correct something on a W two, is that an extra? Yeah, let's say, you know, we need to correct something on a W-2. Is that an extra four, six, or seven?
No, so it would be, if you, if you, if you see the breakdown up there, it's a base fee of forty-five dollars and then six dollars and fifty cents per W-2. So in that scenario, if it's an error or something that we did, there's no charge for that. If it's something that maybe we were missing, their address is incorrect or their birth date or something like that, there may be a charge. Most times, we can work that stuff out where if it's something like a one-off, they're not going to bill you for it.
Okay, thank you.
But it could be like six to seven dollars for the other W-2, if that is possible.
Software updates and costs, I'm sure you took a look at a little bit of our system. Is there going to be any software changes in this? So is that included in the cost?
Yeah, so, so the unique thing about our database is the cloud-based system and it has an open architecture. So as far as software updates that are required, we update everything internally without our customers really knowing about it. It's going to have that functionality that communicates with systems in your business. That open architecture really creates where the systems start to talk to one another. As far as your guys' setup today, there's going to be no requirement to update anything. Typically, our customers don't have to update anything internally unless it's the accounting system that you may update, and then we would kind of move in tandem with that update. There would be no charge for that, though.
My...
Can we get, can we get, uh, review reports, especially before we have a little access to in and out, in and out? So can we get our goals available or is something...
Are you referring to in-the-time system?
Yeah, in and out, the reports, so that would be available by the week.
Yeah, oh yeah, yeah, absolutely. There's a dashboard that supervisors could have access to. Whomever you want can have access to it, and you can review every punch-in and every punch-out. You have scheduled reports that'll deliver to you, so you'll have those every couple of weeks, all the punch-ins and punch-outs, and you'll be able to review all that. The geo-fence is also capable of tracking whether or not people try to punch, punch in outside the building to, you'll get a notification for that. So, yeah, and the reporting is available.
Now, you said that would, that would be available to the administrator, whatever, whoever, not available to everybody.
Just whomever we set. Yeah, our system has hierarchies within it, so whatever you guys want to set is an administrator, supervisor. Sometimes people just have, you know, report view, or they can just see a certain group of employees. It's however you guys want to set it up. We'll work with your team during implementation and make sure that's set up.
I have one more question. How do you go about, you know, with affairs of higher, um, ready? I'm sorry. How do you go about correcting something? Like say, for instance, a employee comes in late or something like that, they just get to punch in and out or in or out? How do you correct something like that?
Sure, so, good question. So in our system, there's a dashboard, and I can see, you guys want me to pull it up? Is that helpful? I think I'm on the hotspot internet, so bear with me here. So there's a, to answer the question while this is loading, there's a dashboard that all the administrators will have access to. When they log into the system, they're going to see, let's see. So there's a dashboard that they'll see, and one of the tabs is missed punches. So they'll click that. It'll, it'll show them every missed punch, and they can click the employee's name that had the missed punch and then make the change on a virtual time card.
And that would be to the administrator?
Correct. It's loading up here for a minute. I don't know if it's going to let me in or not because I'm on the Xfinity hotspot. I wasn't sure what the internet password was when I got here, so it looks like it's moving, but we'll see. Any other questions I can answer while this tries to fire?
Yes, I have a question. So when you use the mobile to punch in, does it, like GPS that you're on the grounds of the village house, so you can't punch from home?
Yep, so...
Is that what it does?
Yeah, a hundred percent. Yep, so within three feet of the doorway. So they could literally be standing outside the door and punch, but you guys would probably see them at that point, right? Um, yeah, and it'll drop a pin right where they are. If they try to punch outside that perimeter, it'll drop a pin where they were. Yeah, well, you could, you could actually make it capable of them, letting them punch in from wherever, but it'll drop a pin where they're at, so you can then review that, and you'll know if they're outside those perimeters. It's loading up here. Let's see if it lets me in. Any other questions?
Yeah, a question. How good is this quote? I mean, how long is this quote good for?
Uh, as, as, as long as you guys are with us, right? So the prices are always subject to change based off market fluctuation. That's every few years. I've never seen, seen it change more than a couple of dollars a month. It's not like an introductory rate and then all of a sudden it changes. It's, it's more so just doing good business with you guys, having you stay with us. A lot of the organizations that we, we work with, retention is important, right? So go to different places based off cost. We try to, you know, change that model a little bit, make customers stay with us for a long time. If you do, uh, if you do some research, our CEO is from, from Homewood, Illinois. He's running a payroll company out in Canada right now called Blue Marble. They have the same motto. We're both publicly traded organizations. It's important that we make sure that everyone knows what our numbers are and what's happening. So, yeah, to answer your question, that, that price is good for, as long as you're with us. It may change a couple of dollars, but we would always notify you in advance of that. Sure.
Ladies with COVID-19?
Sure.
Hope you think that our employees can work at home? So how do you determine, or is there some kind of provision that you have to determine that they're actually working, you know?
So one of the dashboards in our system, this is taking forever here. Uh, one of the dashboards in our system is utilization. So it's going to show you reporting that'll, that'll show you how long they were in the database, what they're utilizing. But as far as remote work, there's a portal called Community in Paylocity that'll allow the employees to communicate with one another and get messages out to them. It has video capabilities, so you're able to make announcements to the employees if needed, and you'll be able to, it's, you know, kind of built for engagement, right? To keep those employees engaged if they're at work, if they're working from home. No, that's part of what, what you see today, yeah. It's a big component of what we're doing right now. I think that's free for our customers, in fact, right now, yeah. They're trying to, you know, our, coincidentally, we changed our mission to Forward Together about a week prior to, to, you know, to COVID. So it was just, you know, kind of our, our motto already to, to make sure we can push towards remote, and it just so happened that that's a very common thing now. Yeah, I don't know if the internet's going to let me into our demo. It's for security purposes. Since I'm on a public Wi-Fi portal, it might not let me back in.
Yeah, there's a, uh, and any other questions? Okay, I'm sure you've been in contact with the, our, the people that did, and you mentioned the payroll and the village administrator, everyone that's doing it, so. This, this quote that you have here, is the quote that you, that you're looking at?
Yep.
I'm trying to look at that from you.
Yep. And, and what this, this would include, I think the discussion was to try to get the board to approve so that we could start to move on this right away, only because there's a financial incentive to not charge any setup, as well as not charge you guys for the second, third, or fourth month of service with us. So that would be free. That's if we get a commitment from you guys before the end of the month so we can get started on implementation in October. Three weeks for payroll, and then the rest of the system, we can kind of take our time with. It depends on how fast the village wants to move, but in terms of getting everybody paid, it's about twenty-one days.
Okay, this one, I mean, that's probably what you need to change. You always want to make sure.
Sure.
In those, in that period of time, that's what I'm asking, that period of time in between two services, is it going to be a paper check or...
So, good question. So direct deposit's always live on that first payroll. Part of the implementation process is to log into ADP and extract all the data out of there. If we do that before the end of the year, what we can do is make sure all the balances are loaded outright and they're backing up so the taxes paid match what the employees have been paid. It's like a mini audit that we get to perform without having to charge you guys anything for it. If we find anything that we don't like or that doesn't add up, we'll bring it to you guys. If not, we'll just keep moving. We'll load those balances in, and then everyone will get one set of W-2s, and they'll get their direct deposit as if nothing changed. The only thing that's going to change that's big for them is the app they log into and then the services that are available to them in that app.
Any other questions? All right, now, you will be here for much, so will either way.
Beautiful. I appreciate it. Thank you very much for your time, you guys.
Mr. Mayor, I, because it's not, it's not a question for you. This is a question I think that we need to know is, when is our contract up with ADP? When our contract is up and what we pay ADP monthly?
Well, that you're going to have to probably have, you might look at that. I don't think they want to have that readily available.
Yeah, I can give them a ninety-day notice.
Okay, but, uh...
You give them a what?
I think, when I look at this, I think this is a little, little bit cheap on what I see on the, I'm going to pay. I think it's six something every two weeks. Six hundred and something every two weeks.
I just wanted to know when the contract is.
Oh, the contract. It's much, but I thought it was... Okay, no, it's ninety days turnaround. I mean, I don't think it's much money. But, uh, right, notice, right. I don't think it's ninety days, but I don't want to discuss price right now. Do you have something? Oh, right, no, I mean...
See, I was going to say, because you said we have an incentive if we move right away. But now we have nine days. We have to either pay, buy out, ADP's contract, or...
I don't think we have to buy ADP's contract.
You said nine days we have to give them.
Yeah, but notice, yeah.
So that you have to keep it for nine days or pay for it.
Okay, Mr. Finch, go ahead.
The plan is to move forward and give them eighty or ninety-day notice. Then have a contract with Paylocity to be started in like thirty, thirty-sixty days so that within the next ninety days, as the people should give in, they have extraction, all have, wait to be. Potentially, days, Paylocity will lie during the winter. Oh, well, I feel they have, we have three months of payment which are all piece by piece.
Okay, stop. All right, the next thing, uh, we're going to be talking about occupancy.
Mr. Mayor, I asked to talk about our occupancy inspectors, just because, you know, I wasn't sure how this came to be. Why, why, for our occupancy homes, how did we come to be to have two independent inspectors inspect our rental homes? Yeah, I know there's got to be a history.
We just had more than that at one time, really. But it's just two now. A few of them fell off, I don't know, because they didn't get certification or they didn't have an eligibility. We had a few, but when I was testing, we had, I don't know.
Well, did we find it cheaper to do that, or is it, was it cheaper to have somebody in-house? That was my question.
Well, I don't think we ever had in-house.
Never had in-house.
I don't think so. I don't think we ever had in-house. It always had independence.
So here's the, here's the issue that I have, and again, I don't hear the horror stories. I don't hear any of the great stories that these guys have found something that nobody else would find. So I don't get a chance to get them. All I hear is a bad story. So I won't cast any aspersions because it's somebody else's inspection that I'm hearing about. But my concern became is that we have two independent inspectors doing our rental occupancy homes that are getting paid directly from the homeowners or the owners, not the renters, the owners, because of rental problems. Which I just thought puts us in a very peculiar and difficult spot. And I thought that that payment should at least come through the village, and then we assign the inspector to go out and get the report back. That's number one. Number two is that after, you know, the long and lengthy discussions I've had with the realtors, they keep arguing that we have no jurisdiction to do so, that we have to have by law, because they're not home rule, somebody in-house doing this. And I understand the cost of it. It's a huge cost to have somebody, it's insurance, it's benefits, to have somebody there, but... So that's what I'm trying to say, if I had the attorneys looking at that for me, to make sure that we, that's accurate. But those are two different issues that really come to why we have independent inspectors out doing our homes that have no, there's no secondary adjudication. So if there's a problem there, who do they go to if there's an issue? They have no one to fall back on, the, the owners, if the person who's doing the inspection is giving them a tough time. Is there an adjudication process? We don't have that. So I'm, I'm looking at the possibility of either, and I've talked to Mr. Myers about doing this, of doing that temporarily till we talk to somebody about doing it as a business. What we've talked before is going out for a RFP to have a company come and do this. So, and I know I'm putting the cart before the horse because I have to have the attorney's opinion of whether or not we're able to do so, or whether or not we get to have in-house inspectors. But if the attorneys come back and say, yes, we have to have an in-house inspector do it, we can't have private inspectors do so, in the, in the intermediate time before we can really get our arms around this, I'm asking if Mr. Myers can do it. He said he can do it. He's certified. He knows his village very well. He's, he's working his tail off in regards to our code enforcement. He's doing a great job and trying to take care of everything that needs to get done. If the attorneys come back and tell us, no, the realtors are wrong, we can't privatize this, then I want to go out for a RFP and get a company coming to do the inspections for us through our financing. So it would be, the village would get the money for the inspection fee, and then we would pay the company. So we would be able to make, control that process as it goes on. I just think there's just too much unsupervised actions going on that we have no control. And again, I'm not saying anything good or bad, I'm just saying we should have control when the inspections are being done, what's being inspected, how much it's costing, who is getting paid for it, and what are the adjudications of it, what is the end of it? And how do they go to, if there's a problem, who do they go to to override it or have a second look at it? We don't have that process now. So that's what I'm asking for in the interim, is to allow our internal person to do it, who said he has the time to do so. And then at that point, let's maybe get a different perspective of how we want to handle our inspectors.
Well, I just wanted to, first of all, this is the way, then, since I think that they be had independently. I've never had a company that I know of, unless it was for, say, though, came and did, um, the commercial and the industrial and, you know, some of the housing projects. But outside of that, it was always, they would have to, the, the internal would have, not internal, but we had people that were licensed, by, that get licensed by the individuals, licensed in different aspects, plumbing, engineering, and things of that nature. Now, out in the wild, it's suddenly become a problem, because we're finding, they're finding other things. And if you said that you actually looked and, and looked at it, some of these things that are going on right now have been going on for a long, long time, and then we found it out now that they've been going on for a while, so sometimes it is good to change and get new eyes on it and new perspectives. As far as having our own person to do that, then you have to make that person an employee. So therefore, then that's extra added expense to that. And, you know, if you want to do that, then that would be something that you, like you said, you can put it out there for a particular position, and that's what they would do full-time. But I, I still like to know what's the problem with who we have right now, and why all of a sudden now that's, that's a problem? I mean, it's, it means it's, it was never a problem before, and then all of a sudden now it's a problem. And you're saying that the, the, the investors, well, investors are going to always have a problem because they're trying to, you know, sidestep a lot of stuff, and we see that, and we saw that. And I saw that coming in, that some of these homes that I saw, I'm like, how did they ever get, how did they even get passed in the first place? But they were, okay. But now when they get re-inspected, all of a sudden now, you know, we're finding out that this particular product has been doing this for quite a while. Make a long story short, if you want to get a, not you, the board wants to get a separate person to inspect the homes and be employed by the village, okay, if that's what they want to do. that's what they wanna do, that's, that's a different position, that's a different job, that's a different, um, um, you know, set of worms, a can of worms, but I don't see how come now it's a problem, so you're saying that, you know, we're not gonna go back and forth with that, but I'm just wondering, why is it, and if they wanna change that part, make that job, make it a job, make it a full-time job, pay benefits or whatever the case may be, then we can go out and then have people that apply for that particular position and go from there. If that's what it wants to be done, but outside of that, the reason why we now are things are being done, because people are finding stuff, people are, uh, being inspected now, and if it comes up to some of these landlords, some of that stuff, oh, they're like, why are you looking at her, why are you doing this, why are you doing that, I mean, would you live in it? That's my thing, would you, if the house is not, I mean, I, I would like my houses was me renting and you expecting, I wanted to be expected to where you would live in that same place, so, but that is, that's what the board wants to do, is to, I think that's what I'm hearing from you, have a full-time person to come and do that, then fine, but, uh, you know, and then they understand what, what it means with that, that's my problem.
I think the board and myself also would always want the best for our residents, that's a good, I would hope that would be everybody's idea. And I understand that there's some unscrupulous owners out there that'll do whatever they can to skirt the, the law and skirt what they have to do, and again, I'm not casting any aspersions, all I'm saying is that we have lost total control of that. So, we, we, we have a lot, we, they come in and ask for an occupancy permit, which is really a life, just looking at life safety. We're making sure that they have a smoke detector, we're making sure that things are safe, making sure they have GFI's, making sure that the, the gas heater is correct, making sure their stove is properly connected. We're not getting into the framework of the house, we're not going into, we should, again, I thought a home occupancy, we're not going and looking at the structure of the house, that would be our building department, and that would be SafeBuild, they would be the ones that would be doing that. And if there's a problem with the home, then the renter would call the village out to say, I have a problem with this home, and then we would address it that way. But these are home occupancies, so this is making sure the home is safe for someone to live in.
Okay, so what, so what I'm asking, when are you asking, when is that due?
I, I'm looking at the possibility of letting us do this internally, right now they turn, and again, don't quote me on the amount, I think it's three hundred dollars for an inspection.
Okay.
And then they come out, am I right? I think that's three hundred dollars for inspection, and includes one re-inspection if they have to come out, and if they have to come out a second or third time, then there's an additional cost. Again, I, besides being an exorbitant amount, I just think that there's, we've lost control of it as a village.
Who pays for that, do we have?
The owner.
Okay.
The owners.
Okay, so, I mean, why would that be extraordinary?
I think if you're gonna, if you're gonna charge three hundred, well, I, I don't know how long an inspection takes, Mr. Mayor, is it taking hours, is it worth three hundred dollars an hour?
Wouldn't you want your house to be inspected properly?
I do, I would have forced to.
I mean, if you're gonna make money, whoever it is that's doing, that's, uh, renting the home is gonna make money, wouldn't you want it inspected?
Well, I've heard time to time again, again, I only hear the negative stories, I don't hear any of the positive stories, so I hear, you know, there's impossible with our rental costs to be able to make any money on the rental process. And, and, and on the flip side of this whole thing, we had this lawsuit against this village that's kinda gonna mandate us to make a decision on how we wanna go, right? So, for us to get this resolved...
That lawsuit's something that was brought up here, I mean, but, I mean, he's been doing this for years, and we're not going to municipality that he's brought a lawsuit against, so...
I understand, but he does go.
That's his job, there you go.
He does it very well.
Well, I mean, he's being funded by the people, so, I'm just saying, so if you're asking to put, and this is what I'm trying to find out, you're asking to get a person?
No, what I'm asking right now is, let's review this, let me have, uh, our internal guy do the home occupancy stuff as of now, we would get the fees in the village of...
Okay, if you're gonna do that, then I need to make sure whoever the internal person is has the proper, because I don't know.
Sorry, I've gone through this before, he's certified.
I understand that, but we need to find out from someone independent or whatever, what the protocol is.
We have to be licensed by the state.
Okay, I understand that.
That's all you have.
But I just wanna make sure that they're able to do that, because now it's our responsibility.
I understand that, and it's a big, it's a big issue.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, when we, we had a discussion about SafeBuild, uh, when we were talking about ordinance, when he did his presentation, and I thought, my understanding was the board wanted to ask a law for bid, for building permits, and I thought we said the home inspections and the rental inspections, uh, we already discussed this. Uh, I don't know nothing about an internal inspector, but we did talk about, um, having a, a bid packet put together and have people bid on building permits and the home and sale inspections. We already discussed this, I don't think we agreed on it.
So, then you want, do you want SafeBuild, this company to come and do, and go out?
Well, I, we wanted to go out for bid, for bid, that was the, the issue that we brought up a couple of meetings ago, is...
So, if you go out for bid, you have a company do it?
No, if, if we go out for bid, it'd be a company doing it.
That's what I'm saying, so, but then you're saying...
Which I told was illegal, we, we can't do that either. And we had to have somebody in-house by, by law, so again, I have to review that.
Okay, I, you should send me that, when I want to do that.
Okay, so, my question was, is let's bring this internally inside to the village, we would make the fees in the village of, of Salt Village, so then we'd be able to pay the cost of our inspector, um, and we have a control method on it, and we have an adjudication if we have a problem with, with, uh, him deciding, or the board, however we wanted to go with that, of a second set of eyes looking at a, an issue, and whether that's a legitimate issue.
Well, is it an issue, is it an issue that's going to be something for inspection of the home, I want a professional, I'm not a professional.
It's a second set of eyes just looking at it, whether it's, uh...
Okay, 'cause I mean, if you want, if they want, if that's what it needs to be, or you want that, let's go out, let's, let's get to do whatever we have to do in the meantime, and keep it the way it is, and then put an application, have an application process to have people do this, and we need to, like I said, I wanna see what it is, what the qualifications are for that particular position, because we're guessing right now, we're saying, should it, is it, I wanna see it right, and what it, what it takes for that inspector to have, what they need to have now according to state.
Your code enforcement officer is the same as your inspector, sir?
No. I want, no, no, I wanna see, like I said, we're speculating now, I wanna see it right, so when it does come back, and you want to see it...
You wanna see it right, okay, that sounds familiar.
Okay, trustee, um, ooh, sorry, I don't know. Okay, trustee, go ahead.
So, question, so, so if we do, do this internally for a period of time, and it's gonna be one person that's gonna be doing the inspections, right now we have two independent inspectors doing it, so how are they gonna keep up? That's one thing. Two, you're gonna tax the, the front desk, because that's gonna be work that they're gonna have to do it in regards to collecting the money, and/or making a database, or whatever the case may be, to keep track of all the inspections, and then, you know, so you're gonna have to have a full-time person doing something. So, right now, Mr. Myers is, I'm sorry, I apologize, right now, the person doing it is part-time, so how is that gonna work out with his current twenty hours a week, or, you know, whatever case he is doing right now? How is that gonna work?
And I haven't got that point to it, and I just, I just wanted to make sure the village, this village realizes we're putting ourselves into a very particular, particular situation in regards to having outside contractors inspecting things that we have no control over.
But if it didn't wait that way for thirty years, I mean...
It doesn't make it right, it's a very lucky...
But we've been long, for a long time, a very long time, if that's the case, and the attorneys would have said something by now, in my opinion, I would think they would have told us years ago, we're not...
I'm not sure they even know that, trustee, I'm not sure they haven't realized it.
That's a problem.
Trustee, um...
Most villages have their internal inspection program, and I understand going, you know, having it privatized, it makes sense, it's cheaper, it's easier to deal with, you know, you don't have the, you don't have the, the insurance part of it, the liability part of it, but I just think that we put ourselves into a really tough position by letting them, if, if nothing else, in the worst-case scenario, I think that this village should be the one that collects the fee and then pays the inspector. That's the worst-case scenario, the least-case scenario. We shouldn't let them be getting paid by the homeowner at the, at the doorstep as they come to inspect. I just think that opens us up for a whole bunch of, of issues.
So, is it about co, collecting the money, the revenue, or is it about collecting, just making sure the process is smooth?
I think, I think it's both.
Because, I mean, we, we do get an administrative fee, um...
No, we don't.
Seventy-five dollars, seventy-five dollar administrative fee, so we do collect cash on the inspections.
They pay us?
The, so seventy-five dollars, I believe that's the number, comes to us, is that right, trustee, just, yeah, so seventy-five dollars comes to us, the village, and we don't do a thing, we don't do anything.
But they come, but they come into, they come and they request that inspection fee as a seventy-five dollar fee, and still paying the inspector at the front door.
Correct, they're still paying the inspector and paying us as well.
Yes, I'm aware, yes.
Trustee, there, what year, what year codes are we using? Do you know? What year, bulk of codes are we using? Two thousand and six, correct? Two thousand and one? Our codes, the code book we use, two thousand and six. I don't know which one these, uh... It's two, right. Okay. The board is, is it?
Okay.
Two thousand and six. So, that's basic life safety. When you inspect, smoke detectors, right? Well, like I said, I wanna see, before we go in the front, I wanna see what it is this inspector should be licensed to do, and I just wanna see that in writing, that's all.
Before, we used to have a roof inspector come out?
We had, that's what we did before, you had each individual came out and did that, and they had, and, and the homeowner had to pay that person, village, the village didn't, they didn't pay that person to do that, and then they paid us the application fee. Trustee, you said?
That's what I wanted to tell the village administrator, um, maybe about four or five months ago, we updated that ordinance, and in that ordinance, if a homeowner has a complaint, um, they can submit a, a letter to the village clerk, that's what's in there, and then, um, the, the adjudication court would make a finding on that, they could, um, appear at court, tell them what they're dissatisfied, and then somebody outside of the village could make that determination if they feel they were mistreated or something was done wrong. Um, there is a seventy-five dollar admin fee along with the three hundred they're paying the inspectors by themselves, so we're making seventy-five dollars, um, like an administrative fee, and the inspectors are making the three hundred.
Okay, that's what we planned with? Okay, doesn't matter, go ahead, trustee, I'm gonna throw you out, I know.
Is there a contract with these two independent, uh, contractors, so how can they do business with the village if there's no contract between the village and the inspector? Is that legal? And also, who, um, I know before, they were charging like plumbing, electrical, and everybody had to get, you know, pay those fees and stuff, so now it seems like, uh, additional party has been put into the loop, where we paying this three hundred dollars for inspection fee when we don't have a contract with the village to do that? So, is all this stuff legal? How does all that work?
Well, if you listen to the realtors, uh, they believe that we are not acting in the best of faith, according to... But again, that's the realtor, so, you can't take that with a grain of salt, um, understanding that they have their own idea that they think the law should be, so, once I get that from our attorney, I'll get that in.
So, we actually, we know if we had the, if the inspectors had entered to the contract to work with, that would work, right?
Again, two very nice men, I'm assuming, I know, I've never met the men who do the inspections, I don't know them, um, I just think that we open ourselves up for situations we don't need, that's my suggestion, that was all my thought. Thank you.
Thank you all. I think that the conversations this evening have been very worthwhile, they've been very positive, they've been really very professional, so I applaud each and every one of you. I do wanna caution you though, a lot of things have come forth this evening, and it says to me that some of you are moving forward, which we're not doing this one important step, and that is your research, and to look at what's already on the books. Last year, we spent considerable hours going back and forth on two specific ordinances. One of them was for renters, and the other one was for homeowners, and you guys spent so much time on it because you did have renters who were attending meetings and they provided their input, and then some of you were going on with what you know how it used to be, and you attempted to come up with some level of agreement, even though, even after the ordinances were passed, they still weren't totally satisfied. So, I'm not gonna talk any longer on it, other than to invite you, who have a great interest, to look at the ordinances that were just passed last year, and then look at, do we have to change that ordinance before moving forward? How do we move forward? But you need to know what's in your documents before everybody just go off and just do whatever in terms of what you think is best. Thank you for giving me that opportunity to express that.
Hi, Chief, um, you heard people explain the, um, lateral ordinance to provide lateral hiring, please help.
I had discussed this, um, the last time this app came up, I believe, towards the end of, uh, last year, uh, I'm here to, of course, I wanted to be here to answer any questions concerning the lateral ordinance, uh, the reason why it was pulled, uh, were based on a couple of discussions that we had with the police and fire board, uh, the village attorney, and the police and fire board's attorney. Um, what it does is, it gives us the additional options, uh, when we have limited, uh, opportunities to get, uh, sworn personnel, and so this would give us the opportunity under certain, um, extreme situations or emergency situations where, uh, we were unable to, or it was not in the village's best interest to wait for someone to go through the police academy at that particular time. This in no way negates the, uh, original eligibility list, testing process, nor does this alleviate, uh, the state requirement for us to keep an active list, but what this does is, it creates a secondary list, um, this particular ordinance is closer, well, well within the, uh, the structure, structure for, um, non-home rule, um, municipalities for this process. So, any questions?
Any questions regarding this, this is just gonna go on the agenda for next week to be voted on, you have the ordinance here, and it's an amendment, Article Two, Police Department of the chapter, of the chapter, uh, forty-two Law Enforcement of Municipal Code, of Salt Village, provides for lateral hiring of police officers, and inside it just, uh, explains what that is, and he's asking, has this put on the agenda next week? Uh, to be voted on, any questions?
I just have a quick one.
Yes.
So, this has gone before the, um, Fire and Police Commissioners?
Yes, we've had extensive, we've had extensive conversations concerning this, in fact, at one point, I had a conversation directly with their attorney, and then had a conversation with our own attorney, there was some, uh, there were two intent interpretations of portions of the, uh, ordinance where the village attorney had one perception, the other attorney had the other, um, and I think it wasn't being conveyed directly or properly to the, uh, Board of Fire and Police. Once we sat down, uh, with them, and then I had a conversation, uh, with, with them in front of the, uh, attorney over the phone, uh, there was a better understanding on their behalf, and we were able to move forward.
Okay, 'cause I knew there was an issue the last time, so I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, I understand.
Thanks.
Any other question? This, Chief, wait, Chief, this is for full-time, not part-time?
This is for full-time, yes, sir. Part-time is, uh, that, that has already been amended, uh, I'm sorry, that, that, not amended, that's already, uh, on the books for part-time.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Um, next one is public comment. Whatever. Okay, thank you, Chief, okay. You've got one right now.
I've got one here, I'll probably just walk down low to the first one.
Hello?
Now, we're at the public comments portion of the meeting. Did you have any comments? Did you have a question? Okay, I have one person in... Can you hear me now? Okay, I have one person in front of you that I'm going to ask you for your comment. Is that okay?
Okay, Pat Couch. I have a couple of things that I have questions concerning. I'm glad to see that Mr. Hurkis brought up the inspection process. I do feel that that needs to be addressed for unsung reasons. Another question I have is the budget and the audits. How was the audits affected with the letter that was issued by the mayor several, probably a year or two ago now, to shred all documents from this office? Did that have a pertain to a delay in our audits? Because those documents were ordered shredded. Another item that I have was, I saw on Mr. LeBach's Facebook page about something on my street that is wrapped in the orange tape and there is a problem underground. Now, had he investigated that, he would have found out that has been there for probably ten, fifteen years. The reason it is there is when this village was built or started fifty-plus odd years ago, the water line and the sewer line were put in improperly. The village has had the gentleman from Public Works come out and look at that water line. They have told the residents in that area that cannot be replaced or fixed until that section is completed by the streets, which we had hoped would be done when the two-twenty-first section was completed. That section from Paxton around two-twenty-second and down Shirley, that would be opened up and they could fix that. That street is caving, excuse me, that street is now caving in. It is a danger. And if some car gets too close to that area, it's going to be caving in. So that could be a problem. However, I don't think we have the funding, according to what Mr. Zarnik told me a week or so ago. And I don't know how that all takes place, but that's something to be addressed. The other thing that I have a problem with is, we all go to the bathroom on occasion. I've been in this bathroom, back here, for four weeks in a robe. There is something in that bathroom that has been there for four weeks and never been cleaned. Someone needs to address the ladies restroom. Thank you.
Okay, ma'am, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, can you go with your question? And say your name.
Jennifer. Is there anyone that I can contact or that has the information as to the inoperable fire hydrant that's in the... I would want to know if the fire hydrant on my block is inoperable condition? Because I have children, I take care of children, there's many children on my block. And my neighbor is the person that already experienced a fire where there was a loss of life that was in capital.
Okay, you said you were talking about your block and the fire hydrants, and you asked me what other part was that?
Who can we contact to see if our fire hydrant is part of those ones that's inoperable?
Okay, I'm going to ask, always stated, we're going to answer those questions at the end, so I won't be giving an answer, I'll be putting the answer right there at the end, okay?
Uh huh, okay, thank you.
Good evening. Arnold Coleman. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, alright. We have a lot of, we have full-time and part-time people here employed, right? Is the village administrator, are you, is he... Well, how many hours does the village administrator work? Just ask.
I'm going to ask them all then, go ahead. That's one question.
Okay. And, you know, when I first, when I first started coming here, there was a big groupie duo about surety bonds for, you know, for employees here or people on a higher level. Does the village administrator need a surety bond? And, right, who all needs surety bonds?
Frank Wayne, sixteen, thirty-three, two sixty, please. I have a question. I remember when she was talking about fixing the fire hydrant. There's a chart here that Hank left that would tell you which fire hydrant was broken, which one was not fixed or broke. So that would be the first start for she to work on with that. And I'm listening to her talk. And being a contractor for as long as I've been, is one thing that when you're talking about a contract, one thing you must look at, at the bottom of that contract, is the line that says hidden damage cannot be priced. Other than that, you don't have to worry about it. If he signs it, if he had to dig all the way to China, it can't cost you nothing either. But this is what we have to do about it. Now, second of all, I'm kind of like Pat. When you go into his wife's room, I don't know about nobody else, when you go into a wife's room, you expect it to be clean. This is what we pay people to do, and it's not being that way. And so I believe that if the trustees, the mayor and the clerk, all talk to these people, let them know that this is what they expected of you when you get paid to do that. So that's what I have to say. I hope I don't offend nobody, or I don't let them mad, but that's the way I feel about it.
Okay, the first one was the inspection process to discuss tonight. I guess we're going to get, go back and fine-tune that, come back with a plan, how we're going to move forward, in-house, or do it independently, before getting the company to do it. I'm not understanding... I did put out a directive maybe three years ago about documents being shredded. That was because there were documents that were picked up by, I guess you would call it, our cleaning crew. And there was letters there that were, that I thought should have been shredded instead of, you know, someone finding it out. Then also, a lot of times it gets into the garbage and it doesn't get shredded. And who knows, it may blow, or someone can pick it up. So that was the reason why I put that out there. I don't know where it came from. It was trying to shred documents and has nothing, and I'll say it again, it had nothing to do with the audit or the budget or anything else. So that's a rumor that I'm going to put to rest right now. I did put something out there to make sure all the property heads, when they threw stuff in the garbage, it was sensitive, names and addresses on it, that it shouldn't be shredded, torn up or whatever, so we would put that it wouldn't get, you know, somebody would find it on the ground or whatever. I'm hearing about the bathrooms. I'm going to, again, ask the cleanup crew, company to address those issues. So I appreciate people coming and letting me know that the bathroom, they feel it's not cleaned properly or it has a problem with it, because I don't go into the ladies' room. But I do see the men's room, and if I see something wrong, I do bring that up. So I appreciate that person coming to let me know about that. Surety bonds. Usually that's when someone is in a certain level of administration. And everyone should have one, maybe it was brought up before. I think it was, the person was finance director, and it was making sure that that person or persons, because it was two different people, that had, that had that position. And I think anyone handling anything that has to do with high level, and the village should have a surety bond, protected against a decision they may make or whatever. The village pays for it, so I'm sure that the village administrator, I'll check into it, I haven't looked at it, see, also should be, it should have a surety bond. For the fire hydrants, if you know that your fire hydrant is not working, please come up to the village and let us know. But right now, they do, there was a list, not a list, but a chart, that was put out there with the previous mayor that had, they were, I guess we're putting gold stars right by the different fire hydrants. But since that time, we've had Public Works Director to go over it again. So I'm going to talk to him and find out, has he, does this list differ from what he has right? What that particular list has on it? And then, quite naturally, that's going to be one of the things we're going to have to talk about anyway, to find out, is there a change, that was a few years ago? Have they had any change in that? I don't know. But that's a good, that's a good thing to go by. And that concludes that part. Okay. Comments from the trustees? I'll start with trustee Brewer. I'm sorry. Go ahead, trustee Brewer.
Just to give you a little information, still, things I know regarding the surety bond that we likely... That the former finance director wasn't able to get one, so she didn't have one. I know Mr. Finch has one. So as far as the other village administrator and the other people, I don't think they need one because it's not in the part of their job duties. But, you know, we could always go back and check, but I know for a fact Mr. Finch has one. So just to give you a little info about that. And for closing, my comments for closing is, I'm hoping we get together on these fire hydrants, because it's most important, it should be priority, so we get these things off the ground. We have the funding. So all we have to do is do the RFPs and let's get something done for residents.
You through Brewer, trustee Brewer?
Well, he's...
Are you trustee Brewer, are you trustee Brewer? Are you trustee Brewer?
No, he can't comment on what I'm saying.
He's not, I'm asking you, are you through with your comment? I'm not recognizing...
He interrupted me. Okay, good, alright. So anyway, another thing I want to bring across attention is that for these in-home, in-house inspection, that as I, what I know is that you should have a contract whenever you're doing business with the village. And as far as I know, there's no in-house inspector that has a contract. I might be wrong, but as far as, they told me, the former community development person told me that there is no contract for those people who come in and do inspection. So that's the end of my time.
Trustee, presentee?
I don't have nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Trustee, uh...
I have nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Trustee, Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next Salk Village Public Events Committee free food box giveaway will be this Saturday at nine AM at Bloom Trail, sponsored by Cook County Sixth District Commissioner Donna Miller, Blueprint Foods, USDA, and Bloom Trail High School. It starts at nine, but lineup starts as early as eight o'clock. There will be a variety of fresh fruit, vegetables, and meat. The next blood drive is scheduled for October twenty-fourth from nine to one PM in the senior center. This is the one that was rescheduled from the August event that had to be canceled due to the lack of staff. And also, I wanted to commend trustee Brewer and village administrator Hurkis for the work that they've done so far on trying to secure the fire hydrants and repairing the trees. It's a long time in coming. I just don't want to rush the process. Because once we get into a contract with somebody, we have to know that we're covered with the liability wise. But I appreciate the work that you've done up until this point. So I just wanted to know, are we going to move forward with asking Jim Zarn, Engineer Zarnik, to prepare the pit? Is that a process we're going to start soon? Thank you.
Trustee Bell?
I know for years, our out-of-service hydrants, the top caps were painted a different color or there was a plastic ring that said out of service on my Salk Trail. And the kids break them off. So we would paint the tops of the colors, either green or orange. You know, and over the years, people go out and paint your hydrants in your front yards, the soap mashes, you know, good stuff. But other than that, you know what? We're working on putting a committee, my committee meeting together for the third Tuesday in October. And I will be looking for more, some more volunteers for the safety committee. Thank you very much.
Trustee Grant?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think next Tuesday, we have this public hearing for the budget, and then we have the actual vote at the seven o'clock meeting. Then I'm just asking Mr. Finch and Ms. Roy, I'm sorry, former finance director and the new finance director, if we can have a actual, a budget to actual through, I guess it'll be August, so that way we can actually see where we stand, because we're already a quarter of way through the fiscal year already. So that'd be a good idea to see, you know, how the department heads are doing in regards to their budget, their departments. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. I have a couple of things. Just coming Saturday here at Village Hall, at ten o'clock from ten to twelve, there'll be a seminar on homeownership. And we're going to have two presenters here. They're going to be, they're going to be talking about homeownership, the different things it would take for you to be a homeowner, what would, you know, what do you need to do to become a homeowner, retiring, endosizing, advantages and disadvantages to refinancing, and then the HARP program, find out if you qualify. And then if you're ready to sell your home, what do you have to do, what you should do to get ready to sell your house, and also find out how much, if you want to buy a home, how do you go about finding how much it is that you can afford to do that. So that would be this Saturday here at Village Hall from ten to twelve PM. And we have two presenters, Lisa Calvin and Ronald Gomez. So then, that was put into the water account, so everyone will get a copy of that in their water account. Following Saturday, September twenty-sixth, is our annual corn and dog roast. This year, we're going to be combining that with a movie night at the end. And from the corn and dog roast is going to start at five to eight, and then the movie night under the stars will be from eight fifteen to ten fifteen, and the movie will be Black Panther. It'll be right here at the park and in the... It'll be right here in the park, in the lot, in the park. It's going to be drive-in type. The way it's going to be, you'll be in your car, you use the radio in your car and your speaker, so you won't be outside, so that, that will help us with the proper distancing, so you'll be inside your car. I was told that there's going to be a cost for that, so that's something that we're going to have to, and I'll, and I'll get it out to the trustees as soon as we get the finalization for the movie, the corn and dog roast. We're going to, as we always do, that's going to be part of the parks and recs budget to do the corn and dog roast. Usually we make enough to, to pay for that, so. But the other part, the movie under the stars, so if we get finalization, I'll get that out to the trustees and for consensus to move forward with that. Try to keep the cost down to a minimum, very, very minimal, so. Those two things are going, are going to be going on. Do I have another question? I'll ask a motion to adjourn. Is the, is the executive session, is this, is this a lawyer coming, is the lawyer coming back here? It's never quick, it ain't never quick. I'm going to say, well, I'm not saying, is it, is something that the lawyers need to be involved in?
No, no.
I'll take as consensus. Trustee Williams, executive session? Trustee Bell? Trustee Grant?
No.
Trustee, Representative?
Yes.
Trustee Ty?
Yes, she needs to come in.
Okay. We're going, general public, this is going to pollute our means, so we're going to go into executive session at this point. We'll come back and just adjourn, that's all. If, what is happening? Trustee, you said it's waiting out for personnel? Do you need the HR there?
Yes.
You think you should tell them? No, I didn't, no, I didn't, no, I didn't.
Trustee Brewer, trustee Finch, then I ask you, please come back. Trustee Brewer, please come back.
Trustee Brewer? We need, we need to make a motion to go into executive session. Whoever?
I'm making a motion to go to executive session.
Move back trustee Brewer, second by trustee Williams. Man, work, take our wrong.
Trustee Brewer? Yes.
No.
Trustee Finch? Trustee Ty? Trustee Williams? Yes.